We'll go ahead and call the special commission meeting to order. The two items on the agenda are the 2022 or 2023 budget slash financials. And then evaluations.
Take it out of sleep mode, maybe?
Sure.
Computer is thinking. I'm not sure how to get this. Levi, maybe you can figure out how to cast one here. I don't know. So part of a majority of the meeting is Nicole and the rest of you had asked if we could take you kind of a walk through, through how we get to this stage and where the numbers come from. So I can't get this stuff. It says connecting to your device. I'm not sure. Sarah, where's your remote?
Right here beside you.
Okay. Okay, Sarah brought me an HGMI report, but I don't have a report. So I'll get started while he's doing that. So Sarah and Julie are both in here because all three of us touched the financials in some way, shape, or form throughout the month.
That HGMI one, there's like a remote thing on it? I wonder if that would work if you click on that?
So when Julie, when Julie receives any month, any cash in, or any cash comes in, in the cash box, Julie receives it in and she has to, she has to put it into Bannion and receive it into Bannion. So she's got multiple reports that she has to print out and go through. And we get financials that get emailed to us and we have to print off the statements. And we have to go in and transfer everything over from the internet to Bannion. And also we deal with PSN all the time, too. That's where most of our payments come through is PSN and we run the checks through there. We have a check reader machine and we run the checks through there. And so those get uploaded into PSN and we do this report every morning. We have to transfer the payments from PSN over into Bannion.
And that's utility billing?
Utility billing, yes. Other, we get other things in that go through the cash box where we actually have to physically bring checks to the bank. Julie has to document every single cash transaction, every single utility billing. And she has to put it, she puts it on spreadsheets that are called cash reconciliation. And there's different, for each day that she does a deposit, there's a different spreadsheet. And I can pass this around and Julie can help explain this better because she does this. She does this on a daily basis. So I can pass those around if you guys want to take a look at those. Once Julie gets all the receipts in, then that's when I'm able to do the fund statement sheets. And for another report that both Julie and I have to use off of PSN to pull payments are, it's a monthly statement, where is it? Right here. It's a cash monthly statement that, or I'm sorry, not a cash monthly statement. Activity summary statement that Julie and I have to go into PSN and we have to print off. Julie takes these totals, so these are, are the checks that come through PSN and the utility billings that come through PSN. When Julie pulls, so Julie and I pull these at separate times. She pulls them at month end and she enters them into what we call the check recon. This is where all, on the left-hand side, right here, you will see all of these are utility payments that we get in.
ACH.
ACH.
And that's either Mars or automatic payments coming in.
Right. PSN, Mars.
Anchor does.
Anchor comes in that way.
Holland.
Holland. So all those get put on this side of the sheet. All her daily cash deposits, which remember are those sheets that I'm sending around that she does daily.
Weekly.
Weekly, sorry.
Yeah, or whenever we have.
But you enter, yeah. Those all get in this, this column right here. That's where those go. These down here are like our tax collection, the city sales tax, revenue state sharing, Goose River interest, MRES payments that we get each month, the Microsoft Office pay, the, what do they call?
Microsoft Online.
The Microsoft Online.
Payments.
Payments that we make. That's all on this side. Up here, we have all the APs for the month, all the month ends, the APs. So all the sheets that we give you during the meeting. Payroll, all that, those sheets that look like this, that are in the meeting packets every month. Those items go here. And that's how we get those totals. So everything is incorporated together and we all have our hands in it. Sarah does the AP. So Sarah is the one that fills out, makes all the checks, fills out the, the Excel spreadsheet, makes sure all the payments are gonna be, makes sure everything that needs to get paid is in this column and adds up. So let's see, what am I missing for Julie? Am I missing anything for you, what you have to do each month?
No, and then I go through PSN. I go through all that.
And the bank.
Get this to match. All my utility billings, I put them in, that goes in a receipt, in the receipt book. And key that in. All the receipts have to add up. Everything has to equal out.
Yeah.
At the end of the month.
At the end of the month.
On the ledger, the checking account. I go through the checking account to make sure everything is in there.
Yeah, she actually pulls up the online banking and goes through line by line and pulls in the ACHs that way as well and double checks to make sure we're not missing anything. Yep, and the NSFs. And sometimes there are some NSFs that do show up on here. And then once Sarah and Julie have done all their stuff and I get the bank statement for the month, then I take the bank statement and I take the one from last, the previous month. So for example, this is, I just grabbed March of 2020, or I grabbed April of 2021. But I grabbed Marches and I take off all the payments that didn't, that were pending from last month. I take off all those payments. So any checks that didn't come through in March, that's what these are. And then I go through the bank statement and I go through the checks and I cross off, all these came through on the, on the April bank statement, so I cross those off. So that's what I, I always grab the previous month and I cross off what came through. Then I go through and I make sure all the checks, so then I take the AP for April, AP and the month, all those spreadsheets that Sarah created for the month. Since these are all our checks. So I should have at least three, three spreadsheets because we have two APs and then end of month. I take all those, I go to the back of the check recon and I make sure all the checks have went through. So you cross all those out. After you cross out all the checks and you go through, I go, I always go through the bank statement and cross them out also in the debit area so that that way I know what other debits I need to look for. After I do that, then we go and all the debits are accounted for. Then I take, I go pull the same report Julie did off of PSN. I take this report and I take the check reconc, the check recon, or the check register, we call it. And I put them side by side and I make sure that Julie's, what Julie has here matches here. And then I have to check it off here. So it's a process. And you go and tell, you make sure everything checks off. And these ones, they're kind of all over the place. The only ones that are gonna be off of this report would be in this, this line item. Okay? Then after I go through and I check that, then I go into my spreadsheet for my bank reconciliation. So, and I just do a save as from March and I, I put all my information in here. I take out the checks that were not, that went through, I take all those off. Then I go through my, I go back through the AP and whatever checks or ACHs that do not, that are not highlighted. So like, there's some that are not highlighted. Those ones get put in the checklist where I had taken the ones out that cleared the bank. So those get added to this section of the checklist. Then from there, I have to, so then on the top, you put the bank balance here. And then you have to put the registry balance, the ending balance, which is found over here on Julie's check register. And that goes in to the checkbook balance on my spreadsheet for my bank reconciliation. If everything is correct, this will be zero.
We dig.
And if it isn't, we dig. And if I can't figure it out, I go to Mark and I say, can you please help me and have a fresh revise? Can you look at this? I can't figure it out. If neither one of us figure it out, then we usually, I message the state auditors and they will tell me, depending on the dollar amount, they have asked me to put it up here and they said that at the end of the year, we can write it off, depending on the amount it is. They're not worried about being off by 500 to $1,000, anything over that, then they get a little worried. Okay, so then from there, after we've balanced that out and after Julie's got all her receipts in, then I pull what's called an audit summary report that looks like this. And this is what makes up, these are, this is where I get the numbers for the fund statement sheets that I give you guys. Does that make sense? Okay, so these, and you'll see some of these I have add on here. So all of these things, all of these line item expenditures, we, they're not always broken down line by line in the fund statement sheet. So all of these that say add, I have to add them together and put them in the corresponding line item on here. Does that make sense? After I went through and I did all that, then, oh good, it's working. Okay, so I'm gonna open up. Right now, you guys don't have what we call the summary page on here because it's something that Mark has shown me how to add and that's where I'm going back again. And that's why I'm only in 2021, so I've had to go back and I have to add it to all of these. So I will show you that part if I can open it up. If all my files are here. Sorry, bear with me a second. And you'll see in here, some of these say summary of it by them. That's because those are the ones that I've added the summary page on. All these are done, but we don't have that summary page. And that's what I've been working on, is this adding the summary page on so that you guys know exactly what's in all those accounts. And we've had to do this from 2020 forward. Okay, so here is what I'm trying, I'm working on getting added to all the fund statements. This is a summary. Oh, I didn't have to do this. Okay.
You'll have to accept it.
Oh, whoops. Bear with me, sorry. Okay, so this sheet shows every single fund. And I'll get to this part in a second here. But, so this sheet will show what each fund balance is. And we want this, why is it jumpy? The goal is to get this column all to zero. That's one of the goals of this spreadsheet. This is also supposed to be zero. We've talked to the auditors, they told me to continue on and we will look at this number after I get through 2021. So these boxes right here that are color coordinated come from a report, there's formulas in here. Where's that report? I just had it. That, they come from a report called the balance sheet. And so if you'll see on here, I have highlighted all the corresponding with this, the same color corresponds with the colors that are up here. So then I go through and I enter everything that's in green, I enter in for each fund. All the green ones that I have highlighted green get entered into each fund. All the items, the investment items, which are, so the green ones are like your cash and bank. The orange ones are your certificate of deposits, your Goose River money markets. Those are all the orange, orange ones. And so I go through and I highlight all those and then I put them into this spreadsheet. The yellow ones are your liabilities and unallocated funds. Those are like your deposit payables, like if somebody puts a, a meter deposit down or deposits for the, like if you have an event, something like that. That's what the yellow ones are for. And so you go in and you put all these in. Once you get all these in, that's what, if any of these are wrong or don't match up with, with what's over here, that will have a balance and that's what we don't want. So then we have to go and look and see, okay, well, why is that, why does that have a balance? So there's a lot of digging that goes on to get to that point. So that's what I've been trying to work on, is trying to get these summary sheets up so that you guys know exactly what is in each fund. Did I miss anything, Mark? Okay. I think that's all that I have as far as this. And then this is gonna, this would be printed out and handed to you guys. Does that make sense? I'm sure there's lots of questions and I will try to answer them as best as possible.
So I think this, you are getting it. But the issue that we're having, and that's what I said at the meeting, this is 2020, 2021, we are going into 2023.
I went over an overview because that's what was asked, is me to go over the overview.
I know.
And I'm working on one year plus, I'm working on the current year, Levi, you have to understand. Plus, I'm also trying to catch up from two years ago, so it's not gonna happen overnight.
I'm not saying that, Ashley. What I'm saying is, this is what we have been going off of for the past two years. These numbers aren't telling us what we're truly at. And we can't keep going that direction because you're watching it go from 21 going down. But now we're seeing on this fund balance sheet, that these numbers are getting negative and more negative and more negative. Which I get that we've gotta catch up and we've gotta fix all that in the past. But at some point, we have to start here and say, this is where we're at. Because this number that we see on here is different than what's in the bank and what we actually have. And if we don't know that, how can the commission as a whole make a decision? Because we're basing what our decisions are made off of, off of these numbers, what we are going by. And I know you have said that they're off, but you haven't given us a true number where they're on.
The bottom number is off. Everything in that spreadsheet, everything else is on.
But the bottom number is what we are most concerned about is.
And that's why I give you the cash balance sheet.
But this is the first time we've gotten this cash balance sheet.
Nope, it's not. I've given it periodically here and there. And you asked me to start giving them to you on a regular basis. And so that's why I printed them out for the last meeting. And I will continue to do so. I thought this meeting was supposed to be for an overview so that they could understand where everything was coming from because Nicole has specifically asked and said she wanted to know exactly the ins and outs of what we are doing. So that's what I was explaining.
And you did a great job at that and I, you know, we need to move on from that also. We need to figure out how we're gonna move forward from here.
Well, Mark and I talked and I have spent the last two to three days going through a budget number because, and I'm not sure why, the cash balance sheet from the eighth shows anything different for the starting balances, because I pulled that cash balance sheet the next day to see what was going on. And all the numbers were back to where they were supposed to be. So we're not really sure what happened between the eighth and if it has something to do with receipts or we're not sure on that part. But I compared, of course, I can't find it in all my papers here. I compared the, the end of 2021 balance to the beginning of 2022. And that was correct. And the, and I went through periodically throughout the year and I compared to make sure the beginning balance matched what the ending balance of last year was. So Mark and I talked, because he has been a huge help. And these numbers, so we're, we're fairly, we are confident that these are the number, these are the correct numbers. So he had me go back through the budget that I created and went to the actual 2021 year end and input these, these year end numbers from, here we go. And put these cash balances in that, in the total for the 2021, for the beginning balance or the ending balance of 2021. Because those never got updated. Because we were, it was a learning process. We hadn't done that because we, I didn't know what I was doing and I wasn't told to do that. Sarah inputted the total, the actual totals for 2021. She didn't touch those. So yes, those numbers were incorrect. I have saved a different one, a completely different file of the 2023 budget. And I have spent the last two days going through it and fixing all those totals. And I printed off a whole new expense and revenue report. And I have sat down and I went through both 2020 and 2021 to make sure that they are accurate. So I, that part is a work in progress, but it's also due to a learning curve and something that we weren't aware of. And then once I'm done with this, I'm gonna go through yours and compare it and make sure these numbers are correct before we move forward. So.
It doesn't matter which budget we go through, but that beginning number has to be accurate for us to make decisions as we move forward. And that's the biggest thing that we have to figure out, Ashley.
I just got done telling you that I did that already.
Okay, and I, we, and I said at the beginning of this, we're not blaming, we're just trying to get a starting or stepping out point so that all of us can make a decision on how we need to move forward so that we have a good, strong footing for 2023. And we'll go back as we have time and fix the rest of it. Because if we don't have this strong footing, we don't know how we're gonna move forward and we're gonna be, keep seeing these numbers go down. And so we've gotta fix that as a whole. And so that all five commissioners can see what the true numbers are so that we can figure out what we're gonna spend money on next year, what we're not gonna spend money on, what we can do, what we can't do. And what we need to do with rates, what we need to do with all these things. All this is based off of what those beginning balances are, so we need to know what we need to do. And I'm not, you had a mess and we're figuring it out. But what I'm, what I was trying to do, and maybe it didn't come across, is that those numbers were off and we have to figure out why they were off. And start from a point and move forward. Do any other commissioners have questions?
Is it possible to know what the starting balance is if you don't know what the last two years were? How do you get to that starting balance?
And that's why Mark and I are taking our, we compared January because Levi wanted a starting balance. So this is what Mark and I have talked about, this is, seems to be the most accurate to go off of. But I, I can't say that's 100%, but that's the starting balance that I can give you guys until I get all of this cut up. And as you can see, it's not, that I'm not working on it, I am working on it. 2020 is all done, so, and it's a process, as you can tell. It does, it's not something that can just, sometimes this takes a week, two weeks. It depends on what problems we come out, come in contact with and how much digging we have to do.
Maybe I can just add tiny bit of insight as to why I told her that. So when I got involved in this was shortly after Ashley had started and Matt had left. And the first thing, the first thing I asked for was, you know, what was the last financial report that the commissioners got from Matt? And not that there was nothing to be given. So I was able to go back to the last financial report I got from Leslie. And I was able to rebuild through, you know, that would have been June of 2018. I was able to rebuild to about November of 2018. And, and, you know, when Ashley says, you know, how we know when the, the city finances are reconciled for the month? You, you got three points. You, you got your, and, and the city books are all cash. It's, it's money in and money out. There isn't any accounts receivable or accounts payable. There's no depreciation expense or anything like that. It's, it's, if you write a check, it's an expense. If you receive something in, it's a revenue. And that could, can't be any easier to understand from that standpoint. But there's three points that have to reconcile each month. There's your bank statement, there's your financial report, and then there's the manual ledger that Julie keeps. Those three things need to match every month. And that's where we started finding issues, like for example, there's one here and this is, this is really in the woods, but it, it really bugged me is, in November of 2018, when I looked at the trial balance, all of a sudden the cash numbers were off. But there was this line item that was showing up there called unallocated utilities. And, and Julie explained to me what that was. You know, we, we have, or the city has all these customers that pay on a budget plan for utilities. And, you know, how, how it works is you, you build up your reserve in, in August and, or in the low heat months because it only applies to electric heat customers. And then in the wintertime, it goes down. Well, what was throwing me was that this was all showing up in the general fund. And, and that shouldn't be there. That should be, that's a utility thing. So then I was questioning as to why that wasn't hitting, or how that was getting to the revenue. You know, because if you look up there on that very first line in yellow, it's 100K. And, and really that amount should be about $3,000 because the only amount that really should be sitting in there is the. Because the only amount that really should be sitting in there is the employee tax withholdings. And then you pay out every quarter. But, you know, so having done it for so long and had, having my own way of doing it, or the way we did it, 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 it really kind of confused me, but I accepted it and we kept moving forward. Anytime that I've been involved in helping Ashley find something or figure something out, and, and it gets to my original statement as to why I told her that we should be able to use these numbers is I never saw anything really wrong, I just saw them in wrong places. Like, an example was the sewer department here. And I could probably even find the email if I still had it. Sewer department had like a $200,000 CD. And Matt emailed me, he goes, hey, you know, this $200,000 CDs come due, what's it for? Well, we had a spreadsheet that I pulled back from one, like we had a spreadsheet that showed where all these investments and stuff went. And, you know, we would take monies from the funds and combine them. And then, you know, when the interest came due, we divided out and everyone got their share. Well, that $200,000 CD had come done, or come due, so they cashed it. And then they wrote a check to the airport for a grant that we had promised and allocated for the airport out of the sales tax fund. Well, so you just took $200,000 from the sewer department and paid a grant that was supposed to be paid out of the sales tax fund. You know, well, that's fine, but there was never any of that sales tax money put back to reimburse the sewer department. So, so now for three years or whatever, the sewer departments had like $200,000 less dollars, or whatever the number was. And, and has that been fixed since then? I, I, I don't know. But those were kind of the things that we were running into. There was never, the money was never, there was never any money really being overstated or understated or anything. It was just showing up in wrong spots. So assuming that everything had, and, and, and I even worked forward a little bit. And Julie and I, we had some really good talks about, you know, if, if a, if a check goes NSF in the month before, but it doesn't show up until the next month, you can't, and, but then the person makes it good, you can't receipt it in again because you just double-receded it in because it was sitting in the month before. So, and so assuming that everything has been going forward and stuff, the money in that sheet, whatever they call it, cash balance sheet or whatever that was coming out of Banyan, should be close. Not right, but better than what you have now is, I guess what I'm saying. Until we can figure those things out.
And then when, when we were doing that too, when Matt was here, he had me send over utility billing off of into fund accounting, and that's what screwed everything up. So I quit doing that. I do it manually now. Like, we did it all forever. So that's where that unallocated got so high.
So basically, we're basically having to re-initiate everything that Mark started, and it just got dropped.
To get to Levi's point, I, I completely understand what Levi's saying, and he, and he's 100% right. But to go forward and fix things, you, you maybe, got to make sure you have understanding, just like that example there, you know, that I gave about the sales tax fund and the sewer department and the, the grant that was paid to the airport. You know, maybe instead of raising sewer rates to make up that deficit, you've got to make two $100,000 transfers over two years from the sales tax fund to make, make that amount full in the sewer department. And then that means maybe there's some things that we normally would fund with sales tax that you've got to hold off on for a year or two, or cut back on. So that's, you know, I think everybody understands we need to get to this one point, so, I mean.
We do.
You need the history to move forward, and you've got to move forward because the future's coming. Whether you take 10 days or 10 months, it's, it's here.
Mark, can I, are we able to say something?
Yeah.
How much do we have in sales tax? Do you know? Anybody know? What do we have in our sales tax?
We have 1 million, 1.084 billion in the city debt retirement. And then the other sales tax has 472,000 based on this number. And that's on this new budget that I went through was moving transfers, moving money around so that all of our accounts were back where they needed to be.
We're trying. This computer is slow.
Why it keeps doing 2020?
Well, she's doing that. When that, when something like that was found, was it corrected? Or was it brought to, you know, was it brought up to, to the council to, to change, to take sales tax money and put it back in sewer? Or was it just dropped?
We haven't, we, we're working with the auditors, and they wanted us to wait, and then we did to see where all the funds are at, and then we did, they had us do an adjustment for some other things. So no, this has not been moved.
You know, I brought up something at the last meeting that you had. And I'm still curious about it. When we have all these problems, as big or small as some of them may be, would we still not be advised to get some help and get it done sooner than later? Whether it be Mark, I don't know, Mark, if you have time, can the city hire you?
No.
Well, then I appreciate what you've done, but.
I'd like to come and spend 10 days in here, but I just, I don't.
Yeah. Well, I don't know, what are you thinking, Ashley? Would it be beneficial for you to get some outside help and help you get it cleaned up?
Well, I don't, I, right now, there's no, kind of like what Nicole was saying at the last meeting. CPAs, they're really busy this time of the year.
And I think the problem is too, is to
They don't know the software.
To get the understanding. You know, it's easy for me because I did it for 17 years.
Right. Everybody has a different system, and that's, it would be like having to reteach somebody all over again. So it's, it's a lot.
So can you print that off for all of us so that we have it right now?
I don't know if this is hooked to our printer. I can go to my office and go print it off quick. Can you help me do that?
Yes, please.
I was, I had, yeah, I had plans.
Yeah. I was here alone. And that's when I screwed this up. And then I changed something, and then I had to go.
You know, the amount of time.
I thought they actually.
Changes in armonition.
Yes, and then they started.
So that was kind of one of the big globus cases.
Julie, when did she actually start? September of 18?
No, that was bad.
2020. Fall of 2020.
28 months ago.
Yeah. Yeah, it was September, yeah.
2020.
And I, I was by, basically, by myself. I didn't have time to show anything. The specials we were doing, quite a bunch of stuff.
And I was 28 months ago.
And we've asked for help from A to S. Nobody showed up.
For those two years, did you get any balance? Balance just paid from one month to the other.
I just did what I.
Well, it's balanced up in 2021.
Yeah. I mean, we, the auditors have gone through, they're on like 2021.
2021. 2020 is done, yep.
Yeah. And they have people that quit, so now they're getting behind.
Those are very fine, too.
Yeah. Because the one that was doing R quit, or moved on, they said.
So if we looked at this, Ashley.
No, she's not back yet.
Julie and Sarah. The beginning balance or the ending balance should be correct based on you guys have reconciled with what's in the checkbook, or what's in Goose River and Dakota Heritage, correct?
On the cash balances?
On the cash balances. Whether the ending balance here, this 3 million, 3, 3.37 million should match.
Should.
But that, does that have that CD in place, or is that, or the money market, or does that not include money market?
I think that's what's in checking.
Well, scroll up to the top to put us the title of the report.
I think this is the cash balance report.
Cash balance summary fund accounting for November 17, 22.
This is the cash account, cash balances.
So it'd be just.
December 2022.
So it'd be just what? It would be just the checking account then, not?
Yeah, this is where she, this is the checking account, yeah.
That's just going to each account.
Yeah, because it's cash account 1130.
And that matches with our check, our.
Yeah, so that's your checking balance, so I forget what the 11, what is that say?
What does what say?
Oh yeah, because it says 1130, just Goose River, so.
How many other funds is there? Are there?
Well, you can see them all lined up, you know, so what we mean.
These are all.
You know, we got this bank account, do we have other bank accounts in Dakota? Do we have, what do we have in money markets?
Well, I think the money market's in Goose, if I remember right, the money market. And, and that was done, so you could, you know, back at that time, you had to have your accounts in the same bank to transfer back and forth. So, and then your CDs, you just, you know, we bit them out. We, if we had 100,000 or whatever to do a CD, we would.
That's on me.
You know, just getting those as to terms and prices, and if there was any specials or anything like that, so. But the money market, and the CDs were kind of always treated as like investments, so.
Just how many pages of it?
And then a CD would sit on the books at face value until you cashed it or until you rolled it over. And we would always receive in the interest. If you rolled a CD over, you just rolled it over at face value again and have a rate check for the interest and receive that.
What did it do?
Our printer is from 2015. It's been empty, yeah.
It pulls, it pulls random pages. Nice JR. I think we need to like, needs to be cleaned. Or we need new rollers on it.
All of that printer?
Yeah. Need to get new rollers. Need to call, call them.
Sorry, we have blank pages. Okay, so take one of each. And one's the top and one's the bottom. I don't know why it printed like that.
So you looked at 2021, Ashley, for the, the beginning balance?
I looked at the ending balance of 2021 and the beginning balance of 2022.
So there, so obviously there must have been a change.
And then, so that was, did I give you?
And we updated Banyan too before, since, like before you printed off the.
Before the eighth.
The eighth. So, so December 8th, you printed that off, and we had just done. We had just done an update on all of the Banyan software, so I don't know if that messed it up.
Yeah, you guys understand where my desk is, that was such a mess.
But there's still, what I'm saying, if you look back on the eighth, when you printed it off, there.
We have no idea what happened, because I highlighted. Where did I put that one? Yeah, because those are the ones that were off.
And it was mostly like AP, like the AP ones were off, it seems like. AP and then the utility billing.
Yeah, because they've had some weird problems once in a while. Yeah, because I don't, I have no idea.
So then when she printed off on December 19th or 20th, then they were matching up, so I don't know.
And when I printed, yeah, so when I printed on, yeah, even 1220, when I printed, they were matching.
So this one would be the one that's.
What's the date on that one? So that one was the one that was matching finally, but it was the, whatever she printed on the eighth? No, the second. When was it that she gave you the sheet? Yeah, so that's when it was not. These are the ones that weren't matching up with the 19.
Yeah, I have no idea what happened.
Hey, Levi, did I look at the one that you were comparing to the one that was different, or?
Yep.
The journals or the transfers of good accounts, I think, is what we decided.
Yeah, yeah, the journal, yeah.
And then she reprinted it on the 20th, and then it was all right.
Do you have the one from today?
And she does also journal entries.
But if you go back and look at it, so this beginning balance, does that match what we had? Pretty close in the bank account on that day?
In the actual.
We have it in the actual bank account.
I would have had to look at that exact time. I don't write it down. I guess I don't.
Meaning, so could we say that if you look at the ending number, we have about 3.399 in our checking account today?
No, a lot of them she did.
So she printed this today?
She printed it today.
So this number should match the bank account.
Today? I didn't go in there yet today. Did you go in the bank account today?
No, it's locked up. I didn't have a chance. Oh, we're putting in, I don't know, what happened?
It's locked.
Yeah.
But that number seems about right.
Okay, I can let you know tomorrow. I haven't been in it.
So then, if you look at the.
I haven't been in it yet today.
So then tomorrow, that, then the cash balance for tomorrow, then that ending balance should match the.
Be close. It won't be matching.
Should be close to the rate.
We're talking, you can count your sales tax money, for example.
To call Goose River or something, get it unlocked?
Sure.
Rise at lock.
If you're using money to make that, make some of these accounts balance, how can you set your budget as an increase if you don't need it? Or do you still need it?
You still need it based on what?
Even after you pay it off, you, you keep up?
Because if you think about it, we're generating on the general fund, we asked to take in 300,000 this year. Last year we were at 260. General fund funds our police department, our auditor's office, and our police contractor loan is.
But just so you know, you guys are in the hole the minute you start that. Because there, I, I have, one thing I found when I was working too, which really confused the heck out of me, was, was it when the new pay order was bought?
That, because there's, it's.
Because somehow, the way that loan was set up.
Yes, it comes out of our, comes out of our sales tax. Our, comes out of our property tax.
You know, so that payment, whenever that first collection comes, that payment goes to the county. The county withholds the money from our property taxes to make that payment. So if you ask for $300,000 in property taxes, you're going to get 260 back. So there, then, and, and that's, that's fine, as long as you understand then the funds, like the street department, the electric department, and the water department, should be reimbursing the general fund for those payments, that payment.
I do, I, I've moved, I, I've.
You do.
Comes in property tax, and then I'm, I gotta go see how I do it.
It's like 15, it's negative 15 something in each, yeah, in each bond. That's the negative number that's in the revenue spot on the funds that it's supposed to come out of. It's like negative 15 something.
I can pull up how I do it.
Should be in here.
So in other words, you, what Mark is saying then, regardless what you take in, we should, that should be increased to take care of the rate, right, Mark?
No, I'm just saying that what Julie, I guess Julie reassured me was being done is that, you know, if you need, or $300,000. if you need access or $300,000 to operate your general fund to pay for everything, and the county is withholding 40,000 of it to make an equipment payment, that the funds that are using that equipment need to be reimbursing the general fund for that payment being upheld. And, and I just roll my eyes when I think of why it was set up that way, I just blow my mind. But Julie did say that they are doing that, they are taking money from the electric department and the water department and the street department to reimburse the general fund for that, so.
Then you'd have to increase all of those departments so you aren't in the red, like you said, we'd be so that if he's doing a budget, he should increase it now, right?
Well, first off, you can't change anything for this year. I mean, all, all he's trying to do is put something together.
For 23.
Well, you can't change anything with regards to property taxes.
Right.
He can, you can raise rates and do whatever you have to do. Yeah, so you're right, I'm sorry.
But I meant, I meant you could raise the rates to take care of that.
Ash, you were telling me about different markets and about you can do transfers or changes up to February 1st for the 2022 budget. What was, can you explain that or?
For, to amend the budget, so after, after all, and I reached out to Stephanie at Legisities just to make sure, but after everything comes through, so after you get your finals for December, so first, probably by the time we get everything in for December, probably second, third week of January, we'll know what our ending totals are for December. And then you look at those ending totals and see, okay, so, and you look at those, look at your budget and see how far we're off. And then you can do amendments to your budget up to February 1st. They're usually done in January to kind of bring your budget whole, is what my understanding is.
Yeah, no, that, and that actually is, it pertains here, but it doesn't. So what, what you're saying there is, in any given year, something can happen. You know, you can, I'm trying to think of an example, good example. You decide in June that you're going to do a street fund. More than likely, or you got to purchase something expensive that wasn't in the budget. So, or fuel prices drive your fuel expense way up. If your individual funds go over, and I think the number used to be 10%, at, in February after the previous year, you, you know, you can amend your budget because the auditors want to see your budget within 10% of itself, so, or under 10% or under, so. And, and that doesn't only pertain to expenses, that pertains to revenues too. So, you know, like Ashley was saying, and it works about the time when you put the final revenue expenditures and stuff report in the paper for the year is you approve your budget amendments at that time or prior to that, so it gets put into the book. Or in the paper, so, so yeah. But for, for purposes of what Levi's trying to do, you know. So this is the non-binding legal opinion of Mark Forsen. I am not an attorney, you know, I pretend to be one. North Dakota Century Code, JR helping out. North Dakota Century Code says you got to have a budget, you got to have it, the first draft of it done in July or August or whenever the new deadline is now, August? So that was created by lawmakers that only think of property taxes. You know, that has nothing to do with really your utilities or your special assessment funds or anything like that. So you, you can actually mend budgets, I think, all throughout the year if you have to, to change things. You just can't change the amount of property taxes you request. Or you could, or you can't change them on a special assessment you request. Those all have to be set by your budget deadline in the first week of October. That a safe assumption?
Yeah, that's a fair way of saying it.
So, you know, I always, you know, you really got to, we're getting out in the weeds here. You really got to concentrate on your budgets to get your budgets done in a timely manner for purposes of collecting your property taxes. The rest of the stuff you actually have until October to get it, you know, rates or whatever. Because, you know, a lot of times you will raise rates in the middle of the year for whatever reason, so.
So for example, you have an electrical problem, a bunch of Heisman down, whatever, you have to, you have to play that. Could you, can that, can that, that February thing, can you transfer that money from, if you have money in another fund, can you transfer that before February to make that come, you know, more whole?
Well, you can, assuming you have a fund that gives you the permission to do something like that. You know, like the sales tax funds all have designated purposes. So, you know, the, the general fund has designated purposes. Sometimes you can put money, you put money into capital projects or whatever we used to call it. And that was kind of the, the, the fund that you could do anything to with. But, you know, that never got over 25, 30, 40,000, 50,000, something like that, so.
So now that we have the history, do we want to go through and try to figure out our 2022, our 2023 budget? I can put up what I have done so we can kind of move forward and see how it works so you get an understanding of what I looked at. And I'll put the numbers that we have today in and that'll give us a better idea of where we're at. So Ashley, if you want to disconnect.
I'm hard where you're doing.
No, no, no.
Can I ask really quickly, like, the funds 526, 527 and 528 were like quite a while ago, but they all have, yeah, they all have positive balances, but I mean, are these still projects in place or is there a time when one can close out?
These two are done.
Okay, so for these two, they have positive balances?
Yeah, we probably still got some money coming in.
Okay, so do they ever close out? I mean, do they ever transfer over and close out?
Didn't you say, Mark, it wouldn't roll a thumb for three years?
Yes.
And then they get transferred to the.
Well, so your 500s are your, your debt retirement funds. So then, when you collect dollars for a specific debt, like say the bond that was sold for Prairie, that was set up in a 500 account, okay? So you, you do assessments or TIF or whatever, and those dollars come in and those funds can kind of live until the bond is paid off. And once the bond is paid off, you can start transferring or you, you, you have to, to agree by motion of the commission to close the fund. And then, once that fund is closed, that balance has to enter into the general fund. And once it's transferred to the general fund, then you can, it, it kind of loggers it and it turns it into money that you can use anywhere in any one of the other funds you want to. So, or you can even in the general fund.
And what's the norm for closing at three years, you say?
Well, the, and the reason that the years are there is because people who are delinquent on their specials, those payments, you might still get a payment that comes in. And as long as you, to me, you can close it anytime as long, as soon as your final payment has been made on the bond, you just need to remember that when that payment comes in, you just deposit it into the general fund.
So it can be closed anytime, you just wait a certain number of years to put that.
You should, you know, typically you should do it on a budget side. So if, if your last payment was in June, then in 2023, then you would close it. You just show it being closed. And you can close it at the end of 2023, so.
Say Levi.
Yeah.
I got a question for you. If, if you're trying to do your budget for 2023, if you don't have a handle on it now though, how can you? How can you move forward like with pay raises or anything else?
Well, if we can believe and we have an understanding that this number is close to what's in the bank within, you know, thousands of dollars and not, we're not off. What is the password for the wifi?
JR laughs because he had the same issue last week. No exclamation point, right JR?
Correct.
I think it's all caps, I'm like.
I just don't want to say it because we're recording it, so.
Everybody will sit outside and.
Still internet off the city.
Well, I would recommend you buy more internet at that point.
Ashley.
Yeah.
Do you think, Mark brought up the fact about sales tax and stuff? And I think Levi talked to you about that prior to this meeting. But do you think it would be beneficial then to get the sewer one taken care of?
It's the, not the City of Hillsborough, it's the Chambers.
But we have, don't you think it should be two, not just one big lump sum? We don't want to.
What's the City of Hillsborough one?
I don't want to say that that might be the worst issue the city might be facing, so. And, and a fund, a fund can run deficit for a while, as long as you have a plan to get it back. So, you know, you're never, ever going to have, you know, for lack of a better word, a balance sheet, all positives. You, you just never would, so.
What does the one, the city hall one?
Because it should be the same, try putting, if this wasn't working. Try putting this behind it.
So, I wouldn't want that bigger one. I don't know, maybe I'm wrong.
So you'd understand why you should.
Am I right?
You're right. There's lots of little things or lots of things.
But before it wasn't connected, I'm saying, so. Because it's coming all the way over from over there.
I think each other would be there, it was 320, bank statement, I don't know.
Yeah, because that one's over there. But this should be the one.
The bank financial report in Julie's ledger. We got the Hillsborough City Commission Chambers now. There we go.
Trust me, you're not all spelled right, that's abbreviated.
I have one of those.
I don't know, we might have to swap, switch, swap places with him.
Incoming.
Incoming. All right, Dave. Oh my gosh, can you hold JR about that long?
So I don't have to run out of here.
There we go.
All right, so this is the summary of what we're levying. Now, this is off and we have to go back and fix, but basically this first sheet, if you're going through, if you have your packet here, the general fund should be levying 300,000 and the rest of these should be levying, what these are based on what we had turned into the county back in October, September.
Do you want that sheet?
No. So that's where this number comes from. In this sheet, it's showing how many mills we, or estimated mills that we'd be levying. And so we levied 300,000 and right now, when I change the numbers, we're off by 36,000. So that means that we have to move money around to make it work. And that's what I made sure that always stayed the theme was that 300,000, because that's what we said we were levying for property taxes for 2023. So this would be our general property tax income. This top line is going to be black because that is saying what the deficit is to come up with the 300,000. Penalty and interest, and this is this loan, that's why it's in here, negative 62850. That's that, the shop payloader and. Snowblower, and that's why you see it as a negative number because we're taking that out right away. But you'll see later on that we're paying it back in on other accounts. Liquor licenses, those type of things. State aid, this would be our property tax state aid that comes in that we also have to give out to the Park District as well. So when we take in 135, I think there's about 25,000 that we give to the Park District. These transfers are the transfers in that I was proposing to come in to make the budget whole for this year. And then we'd have to figure out how we're going to move forward from, from future on. And these are coming out of those 500 accounts that are closed, are done. And we have to transfer those into the general fund and then we can use it in other places, but we have to bring it into the general fund first. The next sheet is pool. And then, so I did things a little bit differently just to try to help understand it on my side. But this is total salary, so the way that I looked at it is we paid all of our salaries out of the general fund. That way you add insurance, everything was in there. And then those funds would transfer money back in saying, this is what you owe as a whole for each employee. And that's based off a percentage. And same thing with phone internet, those are transferred out, everything's being paid out of there. And then those funds would come in and cover those. Whether it looks different on the backend, what Ashley and Sarah and Julie do, that doesn't matter. But it's just how it looked on the budget, so we had an understanding of what one fund is paying another fund to cover those things. This would be our salaries. And this was where you can see that it'll come out, public works salaries, it's 532,000 to our expenses. And that's where, when you, if you went back, you could look and total up these four accounts would enter that 532 that we're paying out in salaries for equipment, or for public works. The same thing with Rec District, because we pay for their salaries out of our general fund. And then the Rec District levies Monday and it goes back in and covers it to a certain extent. And then the Rec District covers whatever is left. And that's where you can see the Medicare, FICA, all these things are all totaled coming in. Sales tax is based off the pool, is that correct, Julie? We paid sales tax for the pool? Are there certain things that we pay sales tax on?
Buildings that can be used for, so it could be.
No, this is an expenditure that we have to pay the state for sales tax.
For, I don't recall anything going on sales tax with a pool, do we?
I, I said.
This was based, I assume that's what it was for, but maybe it's different. This number was still on your budget that you had. This INCO 10 yearly fees, that would be part of that technology that we'd be transferring in because of general fund. INCO 10 would be us looking at changing to that Tyler Tech. That would be our yearly payment to Tyler Tech for the new, for the new software and then those funds would reimburse. And that's where you would see it coming in here, these numbers. And so when we make a change on the budget line item, it'll automatically update it in each one. They're all linked, so everything, we make one change, it will fix it. And this is the other expenditure. The first two, you can see that those are based off of, they weren't in there before. But this would be what our Sheriff Department budget is. This is what we contribute to the fire department is 10,000. But I'm also showing that this is what it costs for utilities for the fire department or an estimated. Whether we write it off, but it's showing that the. Whether we write it off, but it's showing that the Fire Department is because we're paying for their internet and electricity and water and sewer and all, we're covering all of those things. So it's just so that we can see what we're actually spending for each one of those departments. And this transfer out, that would be saying, let's start setting money aside in the capital projects, so 10,000. So if the heat pump goes out, and we need to buy a new heat pump, or if we need new windows, we can say that we've put X amount of dollars into capital projects to help pay off some of these things. The utilities, this is basically on what this building uses and the back shop area that we use for the Police Department. And each one of these is either garbage or sewer, and this is electric. The 68,000 is the approximate kilowatts they're using. And then it figures it out based on what the fees are on another sheet, which I'll go over. This is our contribution to the library, and then contributions to the park. And this is our final sheet of, if we did tree removal again, and the two grants that we had talked about. The 40,000 in there for those facade grants and the demo grants, 20,000 each. And so what I did is I changed this number right here. This negative 498 is what is based off today. So when we go back in, that means that I can, we can take out 36,471 of a transfer in that we were. So if we went to and this is where that bank one comes in. Let's say we take this number. Now we're back at the 300,000 that we would levy. Based on that I said we wouldn't have to take out as much out of the Highway Fund. But we could be taking out of somewhere else. Or whatever transfer in we're going to do, but that's how that would work. 206 is our emergency fund. We transferred all that money out at the last meeting, so that would be zeroed out. And those, this fund, this is the one thing that we have to make sure that we're doing. We cannot keep more than 75% of the current in any of our funds. So we can't keep more than 75% in our funds for the next year. Meaning, if we're levying 300,000, we can't keep 350,000 in reserve. We can only keep 75% of the 300 in reserve for each year, whatever we're levying. And so that's why I zeroed it out, and then we transferred it back in. Or transferred it out to a different account, but this was prior to that. So obviously, this isn't going to be to 215, now it's going to be 201 in a previous year.
Is that all funds we buy, or only certain funds?
Are, any funds that we levy for property taxes.
Can I ask you a question about?
Yeah.
And the only reason I'm asking you this is because I don't think that it's wrong. It's, it's more of a why. Where you have all the utilities being expensed, but maybe being written off, or you know, like the showing that you're charging the Fire Department for utilities, but you know, you probably aren't actually going to bill them, or. I understand why you're doing it, but if you're just going to write it off and stuff, why even bother? Because two years from now, if there's a whole new bunch of commissioners and something changes, you're going to have a kind of an artificial number there that will probably just create confusion.
Partly to see what each fund needs to be whole. So what do we truly need to charge in our sewer fund in order to know what sewer rates need to be based off of what we're doing, or electrical fund? What do we need to make sure that electrical fund is covering what we need to cover? Because we can't set a rate based on numbers, and then we have 100,000 that we're writing off in electrical, but we don't know what that number is. If that makes sense. So if we're writing off 100,000 for electrical to go because of our city buildings, but if we don't know that, that's what we need to charge, how do we truly know what we need to charge our residents to pay for everything? That was the reason behind it. It doesn't have to be in there. It was just my way of trying to get an understanding of how much money we're, are truly working with in each one. Does that make sense?
Well, it, it does, but the thing that I'm concerned about is that if we're trying to square some things up, adding another level of complexity to it might not be the best time to do it.
And this was complexity, you have to remember also that I didn't know all this other stuff when I first started doing.
Okay. I just, you know, again, it's cash in, cash out. And if the Electric Department pays to have the lights on here, you just got to make sure you have enough money to, you know, enough margin to cover your electrical expense that you're paying Missouri River and Water.
But it also goes back to, you know, somebody said, what do we need to actually levy? Or what do we need to charge for Water Department fees to make sure that each of them are charging effectively? So that was my thought behind it when I did it.
Like, a good example would be the pool, which is a money albatross, we all know that. But you know, the amount of water that the pool goes through, their water bill is going to be a million dollars.
I can tell you that I didn't charge the pool because we don't have a meter on the pool, so I have no clue how much water the pool uses.
Well, much water.
Right. And I, and I do get that.
Just check the level of the goose before you go.
So 206 is the emergency fund, and this is what we had set this year to levy.
All right, Jim.
208 is the Municipal Cemetery Fund. Same thing, I had transferred out because we need to make sure that we don't levy too much or leave too much in there. We had 16,000 in there, but we're trying to levy 9,000. Well, that doesn't match numbers. But if I went and changed it to what we actually have.
Can I show one thing on the budget, just so everyone kind of understands how the budget works really well?
Yeah.
So you can look at this, when you do your budget, you look right here. So like, we're doing 2023 budget, this should be your actual numbers for 2021. And this should be your estimated numbers for 2022, that you somehow trend to 2023. Like, like for example here, well, yeah, requested and what your final appropriation is. But you should, and this is the whole point of what Ashley's trying to get done, is that you know everything in this column, and you know that that, what that balance is. That balance should be reconciled back to your December 31st, 2021 checkbook. So then, you know, here, this is what, whenever, when you're doing your budget in July, should be with July and what you figure you're going to end up at the end of the year for. So this number is kind of a guess, and then obviously, that's your projection, so. But this one should always match your December 31st financial statements of the, that year.
805 is the Airport Authority. 806 would be the Rec District Fund, same thing that it zeroed out. 810, I had made that just for the Park District, so we can see what, meaning that they have that loan. We know that we're keeping track of, this is what they have paid off on it, this is what they haven't paid off on it for those lights that we have given that loan, or paid for.
So you want, so you want a fund created, just like we have for like HEDC or the Rec?
Right.
We don't have a Rec District one, but like we do for HEDC.
Uh, we do. We have Rec Districts in 806.
Sorry, I'm long day. So you just want a fund created to keep track of, of that, because they actually have their, they do their own financials?
Right.
Okay.
Because we, we give them money based out of those sales, or out of the state financial aid. But then also, you know, if for years they haven't paid it off, and we don't know what it is, this is one place that we can keep track and at least know what they're paying.
And another thing too, on the, on the revenue side, for example, with this, you could keep track because economic development paid money towards this project that went to the city. And this way you have a place to document where it is.
Right.
Because right now, you don't know, we don't know where that money is, when you look at this.
We have a spreadsheet, but it's not given in the funds, but we can create a fund for it.
And the reason, if we keep it in the funds, then it's one central place where the spreadsheet, somebody might forget that there's a spreadsheet, or that's kind of the reasoning behind it.
That's fine, I was just making sure we were on the same page.
So 240, or 212 is our sales tax fund, the one of the 1% sales tax. And I'll send you a most updated once we get this, but this is what we would transfer into each one of those accounts to make them whole. And this number's probably going to change because Paul, the HEDC one, because the lights came out of there or something. So that's going to be less when we fix that. 213 is our lodging tax, and that one basically should be in and out. Because we are transferring money to HEDC to pay, to do that fund. 214 is the HEDC sales tax, same thing, should be in and out. But we were showing a, in 2022, we were showing a, a negative number, is that, or is it out?
It had to do with that, we weren't paying. Yeah, Julie and I, Julie and I figured it out wrong. But it did get fixed, the reason it shows, because it did get fixed until the bottom of the year. So that's why it got fixed in a different year than what it started.
Right.
The January.
Yeah, so that's why.
So then so there again, we had transferred money in to cover this, so we're going to have to fix that. But, because our number right now is negative 35,36.
And that's probably where it was.
0.74. And you know what? I think I put the wrong number in on. I'll have to go back and fix. I took the beginning number on one of these incident.
It's an easy one to keep track of on here, but then you just.
All right. 453 is our Municipal Infrastructure Fund. This is the one that we get, that we can only use for existing infrastructure. It's also the Prairie Dog Fund.
ARPA.
ARPA, those type of things. Make sure I have that number in there right. So we're 506, 766.
I think it was that in 2021 or 2022.
And we got.
Revenues?
Yeah, we got.
We got 254, 277.86 this year. I might not have showed it on that sheet. It's showing on here.
Okay.
I'm really nervous, I'm like, yes, we have.
535 is our debt retirement.
Sheets?
That is the other sales tax fund, and I believe that number is on 107. So this is what I'm proposing to make those two accounts that we need to make whole, whole. The streets and the sewer with those two payments to them. We can move that money without having to raise an orbit amount of rates to cover it. 525 is the Riverbend, that's paid off, and that's where we're transferring it back out. 526, same thing. It just got finished, so I didn't touch this one, because I want to make sure that all of our money's coming in before we do anything with it. 527, we paid off early also. That one, I didn't take any money out, just to make sure that we are true. Or no, I did take it out to the general fund. Yep, I did move it, sorry. And so that number is changed, this is what we'd have less, but again, I'll have to go back and fix, because we have to move this out of the general fund. Or move, we have to move it from
There, there.
There to the general fund, and then we can move it out to pay something else off. And I changed that number because I had to make sure that we were whole, or we were at that 300,000, so. 528 is a street project. Again, this was another one that we had money sitting in. We'll transfer it into the general fund to make. And then this account can be closed out if everything.
That one's still going, still.
Yeah, that one.
Is it?
That one's still active.
So this will be the last year of that one, right? That's this one. Because we had three of them go out. So this will be the last.
So this one is still active, so.
So this will be the last cycle, yeah.
So I will change that.
Because that'll be the last, this.
This was completed in 2023?
Yeah.
It showed 2022 on there, but maybe you're saying 2222 is the last sale, sale tax, or property.
Yeah.
So.
You just did the last assessment for that one to get paid in 2025.
So we just have to wait until spring of 2020?
Right.
Yeah, remember they were all coming off?
And Prairie View should be finished up, and you know, we're going to show a negative number in there because we, the city was paying taxes on it, on those lots until they got sold. So there may be a negative number on that.
No, it was because, well, yes and no. You know, Prairie View came back in tax foreclosure, so there was three years that no lots were sold or no specials were paid. So it used to be there was about, I think when I sat and I figured that out, when we knew we were getting those back, we were transferring 90K a year from the sales tax in there to avoid having to deficiency assess. So, so you have to make that whole, or you're going to have to do a deficiency assessment, which isn't very fun.
Which I would assume we'll make it whole, but I figured at this time, we're not going to do that just till we got other things figured out. Like Mark said, we can leave some things at a negative for a while till we get more things.
So what you're saying there, Mark, that, that, Fund 29, 529, you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what you're saying is, is that 90,000 that you were taking, the benefit of that, that has to be reversed? When you took it from or no?
Yeah, well, no, no, no.
Oh, okay.
But when we sat down and we knew that was all working out, you know, we put together, showed it to the commission at the time, and about assuming we would sell so many lots a year, and then those people would start paying specials, and you know, there was three years that were no special assessments collected. And. And so I sat, and then, and then they get wiped out because the property got foreclosed for taxes, and then we sold the lots or gave the lots away, or however we did it to get the people on there, start paying assessments and collecting through the TIF dollars, but I, the, you know, those three years of payments were several hundred thousand dollars, so we sat, I sat and figured out, well, to make this whole, and if we sold so many lots this year, in these years, and how much value we could collect from the TIF payments and stuff, we probably are going to still have to move ninety K a year out of the sales tax fund for this, because of to help avoid a deficiency of them, so.
Which that was in the past, and we haven't done that for a while, because we've.
Right.
And obviously, there was one payment that didn't come in, or some other thing.
Right. And then the other thing was, the lots probably sold faster than I predicted, and the house of were worth more, so there was more TIF collections, and, you know, it, it, that was the very dark, is most conservative way to look at it, when we knew we were getting those lots back in tax foreclosure, so.
Five thirty is the Riverwalk debt retirement, or the bond payment back, so this is where it would come in, and we're deferred off, so that means that we're not going to see any money coming in until 2024. Five thirty-two is the Kingman Sewer Project. This is, we can make it one year's payment without having to move any money in, and that was the plan for this year, so, but in the future, we're going to have to move money in, and you also have to remember that we have still some individuals that have not paid for that part of it, and there is another worksheet on it.
How much is that, how much is that, what's the number on that?
On Kingman Sewer that's left?
Yeah, I mean, it's not been paid, it's.
Um. Three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five ten forty-seven is the unpaid principal at this point. Um, the ones in yellow are paid, the ones in white have not paid. And the first column is what it is today, the second column would be if we looked at assessing Riverwalk for their portion of it, if we did that, and I have been working with Lowry to see if they would be entertaining, so we'll see. But basically, that would drive down the, the rest of the ones that have not paid, and that was based off a square footage of land out there. And just so everybody is aware, and Mark, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the original was, is that they were assessed a certain amount, which would be, we'll say, a country, because they've paid theirs off, this was their original assessment, if they paid it in full by a certain date, the city was covering twenty percent or took twenty percent off, and so that would be the discount, and then they paid the, the difference. Um, and that went for everyone, and if they didn't pay it, then they were assessed that twenty percent, so those that haven't paid, um, if they paid up to date, today, they would not get twenty percent, they would only get the twenty percent if they paid in full completely from whatever's left from today on.
Actually, they would, right, they, they would get the twenty percent on the principal portion, because in a, in a utility assessment district, um, the city can put up to twenty percent, at least that's what it used to be. So I look at JR's back, waiting for the nod, yes.
I believe that's still right.
So, but that's how that made, but it was more so that we weren't going to put that money towards it until we received, you know, their payments, so.
Right. And so far, the city has contributed to make these payments about two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. That's what we've contributed to make sure that we can pay the, make the bond payments, so we should see that money come back at some point, which then we can move back in the general fund, but it's going to take some time.
And, and a good example is when Daglman's was built, Daglman's was built a couple of years after, um, after the sewer line had went in for, for LA, and they, you know, the way it works is, you pay a hookup charge to get into the sewer for comparable to what the principal payments would be, plus some interest, and then you can have the option of paying off the remaining balance of the assessment, or you can pay off the remaining balance in full and get the twenty percent, I believe, as the.
Yep.
Was worked out, so.
That's the way it sounded, and this HEDC, they'd contributed a hundred and eighty thousand, and this is what they have left to make those payments, so that they are true and whole. All right, so that was for.
Four, or five thirty-two.
Or that was? Two oh one is next, I think.
Or two oh one.
Five, two oh one is our street fund, and go in and fix that number if it's different.
I think it's the other column, isn't it? The value in 2022 column?
Yep, ending balance in 2022.
Would you put it in 2021?
No, because this is ending balance.
Okay, sorry, but I don't know that that's the end, we don't know that that's the ending balance 2022 yet.
I'm basing it off of this, is what we know what it is today.
Okay.
Which should be pretty close, because the only funds that we'd need to pay out of those accounts would be salaries, would be the last payment that would come out, which is about forty a month, somewhere if I remember right.
They're already gone over time.
Yep.
Isn't that supposed to be a negative?
Yes.
That's why I'm here.
Thanks, JR.
You're under twenty-five dollars.
There we go.
Gosh.
That's funny.
I just saw the difference between the.
And so you kind of have a, uh, let's see, this one isn't going to matter, this would be the, the transfers in to make this whole, we'd take some out of the generator fund to help cover this, sales tax, um, two different sales tax to make sure that we can get this one back up. In streets, there isn't much for revenue, that's, I mean, we, we take, we spend a lot more, about sixty percent of our salary, if I remember right, comes out of, public works comes out of there.
That's how much percent?
But you know, the other thing to a street, you, you need to keep in mind, and this was something Jim and I had worked on, uh, back in the past, was that when you fix a water main, or you do a patch or something like that, when someone comes in and does the asphalt work, that you're making sure that you're not putting that against the street department, that you're billing that back to the water, or the sewer department, or whatever, so, but Levi's right, the only money you get for streets is federal highway tax that comes to you through the state.
And some county road and bridge, but.
Yeah, but.
That's very, very minimal, I'm not sure why it was this much, I think it just got switched around for some reason.
Yeah, or it got, something got coded in one month or whatever, so.
Um, but yes, salaries, a majority of our salaries come out of here, um, and with this, this is planned, for expenditures, about ninety thousand dollars for repair, because Jim did get us some numbers, so that helps us plan on this, and contractors were about sixty-five thousand. The rest of the, and supplies was another twenty thousand. Fuel, I also bumped up, because I knew that it fluctuates so much. And again, some of the things that we, that I tried to make sure, and whether we do it or not, is again, twenty thousand into capital projects, and this number was here, so I get it to zero, but in reality, this is probably what it'll be. Thirty-eight, two six. Saying that's what we go into the equipment fund to, there again, if we're going to buy a payloader in twenty years, or we're going to buy a pickup or whatever, we can use, save some of that funds to help cover that cost upfront. The other thing that we have to remember on this Goose River bank loan, is that it's a, it's a big balloon payment at the end of two.
I don't know the exact, I have to look. Julie had, she has.
I have it here.
Everything.
I have it here.
Does it say the payment on there, call? I know Julie said she wanted to have them.
Let's see.
Just a whole bunch of.
Hundred and seventy-two, three seventy-seven.
It must be like twenty-five, maybe, or something, but she had to put it out for me.
And that's in twenty-six, so we have a hundred and seventy-three thousand that we'll have to pay off, and remember, that's not getting paid off, because that year on our taxes, we'll see a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars less, so we'll have to move that money into the general fund to cover it.
She doesn't have the actual.
That's what this loan and bond payment tab is, when you guys look at it. Uh, let's see, two oh nine. Or, yeah, the transfers out, um, this is utilities, for each one of those, which we already pay, telephone, cell phone, those type of things, and then this is based on the shop and what they're paying, and also, I think it's this, this twenty-one, the forty thousand would be the streetlights, but it's costing us in electricity for streetlights, thereabouts.
So this was armory?
Sorry, I, I just finished up two oh one.
Hold on, you're asking me there.
Two oh nine is the armory fund, um, this is our rent in, and, and I guess, Mark, to also answer the question, I wanted to see what it actually cost us in the armory, was another thing, to see what we were making or losing, um, based on all those figures. Um, and that's where the internet water, garbage sewer, all those things came into play, and so you can see, this is, it's, we're taking in thirteen thirty, thirteen thousand three hundred for rent, and we are expending about fifty-two, five out.
I turned the thermostat down there.
No.
Gosh.
Put some light on, Tommy.
So let her bring some extra blankets.
And in that account, there is some money built up, so we won't have to transfer anything in to do that, if we left it as is. Two eleven is the main street community center. There again, that building doesn't make us money at all, um, let's see if I have to change that number. I forgot about two oh nine.
That's two of eleven.
Your armory, fifty-two out?
Say that on the armory?
Yeah. But on this sheet, it says sixteen nine? Might be that.
Correct, because we don't pay.
Utilities.
Utilities.
Okay, so next year, that should be beginning balance of thirty-eight, plus thirteen green receipts, dispersments should still be around that sixteen?
If we don't change the way that we have been doing things now.
Okay, okay, that makes sense then, because I'm like, these aren't adding up.
But there again, there's, you know, this is about your sixteen, and then this would be that extra, so.
Okay, oh, okay, that makes more sense.
Two eleven is the main street community center, this one again, doesn't make money at all, um, and there was transfer in from sales tax, again, we don't have to do that, because we can, if you don't want to, we can always put it down at the bottom, saying that we're not transferring money in, but this is again, what the utilities are costing us. Part of it, again, is just to see what we're actually spending on each one of these buildings to see what it's costing us. Whether you guys want to move forward and do it or not, that is totally up to the wishes of the commission, this was just the way I had did it. Two fifteen is the capital projects, so this would be our transfers in to build this fund back up, you can see, um, this was me planning for whether we pay it, where we have that balloon payment coming up, that we have some money in here in the end. You're not going to see it on the first one you had, because I added this on later, um, but I'm trying to make sure, so this cemetery, or, what I'm trying to do on the bottom is show what each one is in reserve, because, for example, uh, Paul said the other day that we should have, from a previous report, about sixty, six hundred thousand dollars in reserve in electrical, that was the recommendation from Missouri River from our last rate study. We don't have that, so we should find a place or make sure that we have, that we're saving for that, because if, for whatever reason, we have to replace transformers, and they're thirty-five thousand apiece, or whatever they're going to cost us, we need to have that. Um, so that's kind of what I'm, that was my intent in, of this, and that's where the bottom is to show, um, let's say for electrical, it's five percent of our total budget for the twenty twenty-three year. So if we wanted to say that we always want to have forty percent in reserve, that gives you a number. Maybe I did put it in there, couldn't remember.
They're not updated numbers, though.
Probably not.
From what I printed off.
Four fifty is our equipment fund, same thing, this is planning for, again, some of that, in that balloon payment was building, some of it was equipment, so we have it built up, there again, we can show what it is, this wasn't necessarily built as a percentage, but at least we know how much is in there, if we needed to go buy a new pickup, we need to go buy a snow blower, we need to buy those things, we can have an idea of what's in Four fifty-one is automatic metering, those would be those AMR meters that we've been updating and working on. There again, I was also looking at making sure that we stick some money back into this, because eventually, we're going to have to buy more meters, and we're going to have to buy different things, so, um, whether it's ten thousand, whether it's twenty, whatever, we need, we should stick some in there, so that we have some in this fund, so there again, when we're doing projects, like the one we're doing now, we have funds to cover it down the road. Normally, we don't pay much out, that's why you're seeing a lot more out at this point. Four fifty-two is our caboose, a railroad park, this is all donations based on it, and improvement supplies, this was no other funds going in when we go to put the fence Four fifty-five is the Riverwalk, this was the fund created to pay out the payments for contractor and constructions. So we'll have to make, eventually, when we get to the special assessment, we have those numbers pretty close, so then we can sit down and start working on the specials for that. Four fifty-six is our USDA water and sewer main project, which, now we did have a payment come out, but I was estimating that everything was coming out the next year, so this number will change.
It will, it hasn't.
It has it, yes.
It will after, it will in January, so you won't have to change it, because it, it'll come out, we have it in the AP for January.
January, okay.
Yep.
Four fifty-seven, this is the fund to cover the I-29 bridge going over to Riverwalk, and I did get this number from Steve, so we're at fifty-two, seven fifty is what he's, that's our engineering costs, because the TAP grant does not cover engineering.
Correct.
So we'll transfer that in from capital projects to pay for it. So we'll transfer that in from capital projects to pay for it. Generation generator, this is the fund that in Missouri River, we don't have to have it left in this fund. But we get paid when we run it, when we do different things, and we get a monthly payment for that generator from Missouri River. We should still keep money in there if we need to fix something, but, you know, it's looking like there would be seven hundred and sixty-five by the end. So we should make sure that we are, we can use some of those funds for different things. Make sure I have this rate generation, three sixty. Because our payment went up this year, or it changed. And you'd see that, there again, put some in the equipment fund, some would go to streets to make that hole, and then capital projects. Marcy did also say that there was possibly another, something coming down the road, that they may be looking at another, add more generators in the next year or two, so this could be another place that we could look at to generate out of not just electricity. Six oh-one is our water department. And this one is by far very complicated with East Central Water District in there. This is based on what we are currently using for water numbers, and they come in. And when I, if you look at the utility fees and rate schedule, if we make a change in here, that'll change all of our numbers, and we can see what the income would be. So currently, we're at forty-two fifty, because that went up this month for per connection fee. And then, three dollars per hundred cubic feet, and I'm on this budget, I'm looking at three dollars and fifty cents per hundred cubic foot. So up fifty cents per hundred cubic foot that people would buy water. And you can, it, we'll change it a little bit.
Was it electric that changed, or sewer? It was sewer and water that changed, not the electric. We didn't change electric.
I don't think, I don't think he's working on electric, he's on water.
I'm on water.
Oh, okay, sorry, I was looking at, I'm like, what? Sorry.
And yes, I did, if I did propose it, it's on
Okay.
two columns, one is what our current was, and the other column is proposed.
Sorry, Sarah and I were on the same page, but different than everybody.
This is salaries, supplies, everything, phone, and then when you get down to the bottom, we get into the water treatment plant. And then the three loans, we have two, two loans that come out of there. Our water treatment plant loan, and then our water tower loan also comes out of the water fund. So, and if we
Paid one of those off. We paid the wa, we paid the water tower off this year.
We haven't sent, sent the check.
Yeah, because I talked to the bank.
That was, that was agreed out in a commission meeting, I believe, earlier this fall, right?
I'll have to look into if they got that payment, because I talked to the bank, and I am almost positive we wrote that check already. I'll look into it.
We voted on it, but whether or not we've seen the transfer, I haven't seen it.
I'll look into it.
I thought we sent the check.
I could have swore we sent that check. I'll look into it.
Because that was like in
But don't make, if we haven't made the payment, I don't think we should make the payment until we get everything straightened out.
Okay, I'll look into it, I thought we made
Because that decision was based off of us looking at numbers in our sales tax fund to help pay down some of those, but if we're not true on what we're at, do we want to make that decision? And this is where the bank loan would come out for that, and the transfers out to equipment fund and capital projects. And this USDA loan, that would be the loan that we are taking out for the, from the USDA for the water and sewer lines that we're getting replaced. So this is what it would cost for the bot, for those payments, so if we start this year, we went up two dollars and fifty cents to help cover that cost, so let's start transferring it into the fund every year so that we know that the money is there. Whether we have to make the payment today or not, we start transferring, or whether we have to make the payment this year or not. And then the water treatment plant is split out separately, this is based on, you know, each thing. This was the other place to see, you know, what is the water treatment costing us in electricity and different things.
Yeah, I'm almost positive we paid that, because I remember getting a separate invoice for that. I'll look at it, sorry, that's bothering me now.
Just have to look up in our AP.
So the balance. So with those numbers, this would be the projected revenue expenditures over and what we'd see at the end of the year with those new rate increases. It'd be one seventy-two if we didn't change it, and we went to three, and that's what we stayed at. We'd be at one twenty-one. Six oh-two is the sewer department. This is what we'd need to take in, the city billing is what those other departments would pay for their sewer if we chose to do that. But a lot of the money's coming in from that five thirty-five to cover this. Chair would tell me I forgot a negative number again. That's where we'd be at, and on the water side, or on the sewer side, we went up to nine dollars and fifty cents. And currently, we are charging one cent per hundred cubic foot over nine hundred cubic feet. So you get the first nine hundred cubic feet of water, of sewer for free, or it's in that nine fifty, and then it's one cent for every hundred cubic foot thereafter. This, if we left it at where we're at, this would be our ending number. Even just changing it to the fifty cents per hundred cubic, we're not generating a whole lot. But it does bring the number down. Again, sewer doesn't generate a whole bunch of money.
Is that with the new rates in there?
That's with the new rates, if we went with those new rates. Because, and the loan is in here also. And that's also moving into equipment fund and capital projects, whether we do that or not, you know, it's another thing.
But if you were to take five thirty-five into that six oh-two, that should actually come out as a positive number, that balance, bottom number, right, for twenty-twenty-three.
Five thirty-five?
Yeah.
It's in there. It's already in here.
It's already in there, so we still run the negative at the end of five thirty.
Which, it's very simple to change, like I said, if we take out, we're not going to put any into the equipment fund and capital projects. But there's one of those things of, we have those bond, or those payments in the future, that balloon payment that we also are going to have, so six oh-three is our garbage, I think we've got that under control, if I remember. Right? Based on those numbers. I was thinking we were going to have to change rates, but I believe we can make do. There must have been some other payments or something that came out that didn't get transferred, or money didn't get moved right. And so as long as we, you know, this is with our city billings in. And then our electrical is making a payment in to cover the negative part of it, which we wouldn't have to do that much, we could do forty-eight, six thirty-six. And we're still generating some money. So that would be electrical moving money in to make this negative number at zero based on what we have today, which would then, we are still making money at that, so we wouldn't need to change our rates on garbage and sewer.
Is it next year, the new contract?
I don't remember when the contract's coming up.
I think it's next year.
I'd have to look.
Six oh-four is electrical. And with those rates, the current rates, what we have is eight point two cents for residential and seven and a half cents for commercial. And off-peak is at point, our five and a half cents. And then the connection charges are sixteen for residential and forty-two for commercial. And I wouldn't say that we would need to change those, but if we change the, we went up a half cent on each of those, except for off-peak, because we currently are, if you took the average on electrical, and what we are paying, it's costing us five point four cents per kilowatt, based on the numbers that I had had at the time for these months.
Where do you have the budget for electrical for next year for the repairs?
So on the electrical and repairs, that would be on the expenditures right here, it'd be salaries, and then seventy-five thousand in supplies, a hundred and seventy-five thousand in capital improvement projects. And this thirty-one thousand five hundred, that would be based on if we'd started charging connection fees. We, or what it's going to cost us for connection fees if we have seven new homes that are built. That's based on what Jim had said, you know, if we say a hundred and fifty feet, it's going to cost us forty, about forty-five hundred per connection for a new home to hook up with a hundred and fifty feet of cable.
Are you going to raise the rates on electrical to build up that electrical fund for future
Yes, that's, and that's what I had proposed, and you can see that by raising, we'd bring it up to four thirty-two, nine twelve, thereabouts. And this is with the city billings going in, you know, because right now, like I said, city billings are at a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So electrical writes off about a hundred and twenty-five thousand in electricity to all the different buildings. More, majority of it goes, pretty close to seventy thousand is for the water treatment plant, based on their current usage for next year. If we raise those rates, and like I said, what I would propose is a half cent, because if we didn't, and we stayed where we're at, we went from four to a hundred and thirty-one thousand. And that, I mean, you got to remember that if we don't charge for our city buildings, we're going to take out this number. So you subtract another hundred and nine thousand. So take a hundred and nine thousand off of a hundred and thirty-one thousand.
So you're saying the electrical pays for the electrical at the water plant? That comes out of here, you're saying?
Yes.
Is that right?
It's electrical, but there again
Yeah, but it's not, but it's the water plant. Should that be something we should look at on the water side?
And, but that's where I
Either be what we sell to, you know, together.
Those are blended into that cost to them, their rate, electric is added to their rate.
It's just not blended in on our costs.
Correct.
And that's based
You were talking about doing something with their rate too, right?
We're, we're going to have to. They're, they're working on it right now, getting the true-up done.
We have a meeting set for the thirtieth of January.
And this in the water treat, in the water fund, and six oh-one, I forgot to say that, is, so this number, this this true-up, I basically took on what the difference is, on what we should be charging and what we are currently charging. And then did that on an average of only three years, even though we've done it more than that, just to try to get an estimated number. So this is a, a shot in the dark at what that number is right now.
What do you anticipate your fund will be on electrical with the increase?
If we do the increase. So this is a half cent. And one cent on off-peak. Three twenty-six. Maybe I didn't, no.
No, because that used to be four something.
I remembered it, I, yeah, I know what I did. I said we should change electrical to the same for all users, so point zero eight seven. So commercial would go up to eight point seven cents, and residential would be point, eight point seven cents each. And that's where we'd be at the four thirty-two.
But my question was, what do you think the bottom line would be, what, what do you think your revenue will increase?
Four hundred, our revenue increase would be three hundred and thirty-six thousand.
So if we had a, a two, three years of this, we'd be back where we were at one time in electrical.
And we'll know more once we get
You can't say that, because you don't know what
Right, we can't say that, we don't know what the future's going to bring, but
If you don't spend any more.
I'm just saying, I'm just using today's, it's not just what things are today.
It's feasible, and then, you know, this also includes, like I said, a hundred and fifty thousand into capital projects, and thirty thousand dollars into the equipment fund. So
Realistically, that amount is a drop in the bucket for what needs to be done. It's reality.
Yeah.
It, it's just, the way things cost on the electrical side, and the updating we need to do on the electrical side. That's why I asked so much about money taken out of electrical, is because we've neglected, well, maybe Jim disagrees, but I think there's things we could do on the electrical side that that haven't been put off just because of the
But there again, like I said, if we put a hundred and fifty into the, and we know that we put a hundred and fifty into the capital projects, we can say that in five years down the road, we need to buy a new transformer, we need to do, we need to upgrade to a new substation, we have that money set aside in capital projects to help us offset some of that.
Compared to that increase in demand, which you'll see
Right.
Those grow, grows, it'll be a bigger demand.
I just don't see it being enough, to be honest, but that's just my opinion.
I just don't know how mu, until we get the rate study done, I mean, we can change our rates today, and then we can change them again in, in six months or a year. But this is today based on a synopsis of what we're looking at. Until that rate study's done, we won't have a true synopsis of what we really should be.
That's my feelings too, is that if you need to do it, do it, I mean, you can always come back if you have to, assuming you won't, but if you have to increase it even more.
Well, I'm just looking at the fact, if you're taking, for example, okay, if you're, if you're paying, how much do you save as electrical bill at the water plant? Well, if you took that money and used it in electrical and did some, found some way to, to get to recoup the money from the water side, instead of taking it from the electrical side, because the electrical side doesn't have the money to put up new poles or do whatever needs to be done, because it's helping over here, well, if everybody's happy with that, that's fine, but, you know, I don't want us to be patching, repatching and patching. if everybody's happy with that, that's fine, but, you know, I don't want us to be patching, repatching and patching.
Isn't that going back to the same thing, like I said, that it's all coming out of one checkbook?
Well, I don't, I don't want it all coming out of one checkbook, what I'm saying is, is, is we're more, if we got it in the checkbook, we might do some repairs, but we, we're not going to say, well, there's, there's no money there, but if there's an extra hundred thousand there, well, maybe we can replace that transformer that needed to be done or that pool needed to be done.
What would you propose, they get money if they didn't do this?
Well, I'm saying is, it's a, it depends, you gotta look at the rates, like he was talking about the true-up. We got, until we get that, we don't really know where we're at, as far as what.
And their, their cost is going to go up too, so my feeling is that in the end, they're both going to continue to stay close, you know, they're both going to go up.
We just gotta, I think we gotta be more proactive and make sure that we're staying alongside of that and stay on top of things. And you know, that's where this number.
So it's a gradual, so it's a gradual.
You know, and this, if we charge them three dollars and ten cents, that, remember, that also builds in that I'm putting money aside because this year we have to put, let's see, I'll go back to six oh one.
Well, the other thing you gotta kind of consider too, is you, at what point does it become a repair? And at what point is it a major repair?
Right.
And the difference is, a repair is something we fix, a major repair is something we get an engineer involved in and pay him so you can go out and get public finance to, you know, spread out over fifteen years.
But the, on the water treatment side, on our expenditures, I did plan a separate one for moving or transfer in to the five twenty-five, or into our debt retirement, not, I'm sorry, not, into our capital improvement project to make sure, for example, like the membranes are, there's a cost going in. That, you know, we're setting money aside for those things. And so if you looked, which number was that? Debt retirement. Capital projects, two fifteen.
Do elaborate on that one, I was looking up exactly what you're talking, so how do you, how do you determine, what's kind of a determining factor? Between a repair and.
How much money you have, you know, like, for example, how much was the work that you did out in front of my house this year? What'd that cost us?
The water and street?
Yeah.
I, I don't know where, I'd have to look it up. There's been so many numbers.
Sixty to eighty?
Okay, so, so was that the only one you did, or, you know? My point is, if you know that you're going to have five projects that are going to cost you between sixty and eighty thousand dollars. Maybe it makes sense to get an engineer involved, because you gotta have an engineer involved, and then you sell a bond and you spread that out over so many years instead of writing a check for five hundred thousand dollars in one year. You know, that, that's kind of what I'm saying is, you know, Jim has in his head the ten things he'd like to do in the next two years. And I doubt that any of them cost under ten grand, so.
But that's kind of the point I'm getting at, we have such, you know.
But there was, there was that point where, you know, you know, we did the, we did an upgrade on the electrical for two hundred and some thousand. But we already went past the point, we can't go back and try to take out a loan once it's already started, so we need to plan ahead, and that's part of where some of this is coming from too.
But, but I think the problem you'll run into is, you know, transferring these amounts into this capital project fund. You'll end up cutting yourself short on the short term. Hoping to save money up for something that you can probably finance for when the time comes. Is, that, that's, you know. But, that's just my thought, so.
Makes sense.
But the, on the other side of that, if you don't have those reserves for something that we have those, you know, when you look at Missouri River, or you have a big repair that comes in that we didn't expect, that we're going to have to have some of those funds. Whether it's six hundred thousand or whatever, we have to have that built in somewhere. And that was the intent, whether we put it into the money market after so long, we get this built up and we say, okay, now we're going to transfer it in money market where we earn more money as an investment and take it out as we need it, however, but we gotta start somewhere, so.
Well, the other way you could do it too, is you could just say, you know, instead of transferring these dollars around, you can just say, I want my ending balance in the electric department to be six hundred thousand every year and budget accordingly.
Right.
Instead of, you know, because then what will happen is, one day you, someone will come in and say, well, you got a million dollars in capital projects here. Let's, uh, let's spend seven hundred and fifty thousand of it to do something so that we can, you know, community center or something where those funds weren't, you know, because you throw all this money in this capital projects and you'll forget all the funds that put the money into it, and then when you do need the six hundred thousand dollars for the electric department, there's only four hundred thousand in capital projects. See, that's, that's the thing I always kind of worry about, is you, you move all these funds into this rainy day fund and then the rain comes, but you really kind of needed it for a snowstorm. So, that, and that's just my two cents.
Right, and I, but there again, you have to make sure that everybody knows that we stay at six hundred thousand or we have that number. Whichever way we do it, we got.
But you should also know that in two years, the commission could change and the commission could have a completely different opinion. So, you know, so this is only good for two years.
Don't we have a lot of transformers and different things around town that should be replaced? Isn't there some electrical, only electrical stuff? I'd say more on the side of the, the, not the transformers, but the, the actual line of connections and fuses that supply those transformers. You'll have one go bad, but all these years I've probably, if I had a dozen of them go bad. I mean, as far as the transformers go, I mean, new ones are different, you keep purchasing new ones and we, we upgrade to pedestals and new poles, you know, but more the infrastructure, the structural part of it. The reason I asked you that question is because of what Mark said about selling bonds and doing some of that, is that something we should look at rather than worrying about building up the electrical fund? We gotta get the electrical fund up, I, I think. But is this something that we should do now, when it would actually be cheaper than down the road, just there should be, what do you think, Mark?
We're kind of working on that right now, aren't they?
We're not working on that. I'm talking about, for how many years, I'm talking. I'm talking about Paul, he's getting a bond and.
But they're getting.
Well, we first gotta fight off with, you know.
I know, but I'm just saying it's a place, yes, start.
This is a, this is a start, this is not a, because in order for us to get where, you know, where we're going to sell bonds, we have to have a, you know, we're basically going to have to have a strategic plan, if you want to call it that. Or a, a plan of what we are going to do in the next ten years, so we know that if we're going to replace X amount of transformers or lines or whatever. We can say that we're going to take out X bond to cover those fees and we'll pay it off ten years or however. This is just, this is just the start of one piece of this whole pie that we have to figure out. And it probably will take us two years to get it figured out, and then hopefully the next. Hopefully the next commission will also look at it closely. And then the last one, the mosquito, mosquito has been built up, so that one, I didn't look at touching at all. The only thing different is I took some salaries out of there. You can see the salary worksheet under wages, and so if we go over on this end. You'll see this is the percentages that I had booked at, based on what we had before, and also tried to figure out what each amount of time is spent on it. This, so two oh one is where a majority of them come out. I did spread, spread a little bit more out in the water fund for a couple individuals, because they seem to be doing more on the water treatment side. So should more salaries for their, they're doing daily things out there, so should we be doing that? This also includes this new employee lineman at, based on forty dollars an hour. If we wanted to go that route, electrician slash lineman. And that includes medical division, all those things. Weather shall hold true, it would or not, but I was, I asked again just to make sure, we may not be, we'll be looking for a pool manager.
Yeah, she's done.
She's done.
Yep. Several times that she said that.
She's done.
Well, she's said that for the last five years.
She means it this year.
She tell you.
Ten before that.
No, she, she means it this year.
Yep.
If you found her about ten good employees, she'd probably be back.
I think she, she's just.
She's gonna go travel.
Yep.
So the, on the commission side, this is just proposed, or you guys looked at, you know, if we went up to two hundred, we went up two hundred percent, but we took out the, there would be no family health insurance or insurance payment.
I don't think any of them get family, they just get.
Or not, health insurance, I should say, not necessarily family, but health insurance. That would save, was five thousand difference, but this number can change to whatever you would so choose to like. This is kind of based on what other communities are doing. And the amount of meetings and extra things that are in there. There again, it's built in, we don't have to go with that. But this is what it, looking at, you know, to help alleviate some of those things. But it's totally up to the commission how you want to move forward on those, same thing with the salaries. And this is all based on that six percent. That is the, the budget that I had put together, so. I will do it again to make sure that I have all the numbers fixed on each one. Because this one is off. So I'll make sure to go through and recheck all of these and then I'll send it out to you guys again.
Thank you for going through all of it and explaining it better.
No problem.
I think that was helpful.
So this, this would be an amended.
This would be amended budget, if this is what, and we don't have to necessarily do it today, because I'd have to go in and fix those numbers based off of.
I don't know if we can do it today, can we? We can't do it till the first, after the.
Uh, we could do it today based on that, it's on the agenda for the special commission meeting. If it wasn't necessarily, then we couldn't, but.
But I think it would make more sense for him to fix it, send it out.
Yep. And payroll doesn't come out until the, this end of January, so we would be fine on the payroll side for raises. Questions, comments, concerns?
How are we going to go up, how are we gonna? But originally, I thought we were here for, part of it was to, how are we going to address getting the numbers? You had two thousand twenty-one, you said, no, what's our plans with that?
I said I could, I would work on it and try to get them done by March first. I have been sitting in my office for, what, two days straight with the door shut.
Yeah.
Pretty much, working, I've been mainly working on getting ready for this meeting and getting the budget stuff updated. But my plan is to do set office hours, so I'm not comfortable cutting myself out of the public entirely, because there's people that even with my door shut, still just come in and talk to me, which is fine, that they're just used to it. So my goal is to set Monday, Wednesday, Friday mornings, my doors will be shut until Sarah goes to lunch or until noon, and then I'll be available, I'll have it open in the afternoon, Tuesdays and Thursdays, I'm going to shut it in the afternoon, that way I'm available in the morning, that way it's fully locked. But when my door's shut, then I'm not focusing on any new things, nothing, it's going to be strictly just the bringing everything forward.
And that's important to me. I think we need to get that, just, it just needs to be done. It's the only way we're going to get it done.
Right, and I'm trying to find a balance there, so that.
In reality, do you want to spend eight hours a day doing just this too?
No, because right now my head hurts.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you know, splitting the half a day here, and I know every day is, or, you know, is, it'd be clearer.
Right.
Than to try to do it eight hours straight, you know, so.
Yeah, because once you look at all this stuff for a while, things start, the lines start blurring together, you start transposing numbers and, so, I mean, it's, it's a lot of work, it's not, it's not just easy stuff to do all the time, it's very mentally draining, so. That is my, that is my plan and my goal.
By March?
First.
First, okay.
Or the first meeting in March, whatever it.
So March sixth.
Okay, so March sixth.
Is that?
And as it gets closer, if you feel you gotta adjust that, close your office, close your door. Sarah, she's got to deal with angry customers.
So you're saying you would have everything trued up through twenty twenty-two, the end of twenty twenty-two?
That is my goal.
Is that agreeable to all the commissioners?
I think that the office needs to, you know, we gotta, we gotta be sure that she's able to do that and get her the information she needs and.
Yep.
And if that's a, you know, obviously there's things that have to be done by law at a certain time, but I think, you know, Julie made a comment one time about inventory, where's it on the priority list? Well, for me, it's number one on the priority list. You know, except things that need to get done, you know, every month or week it needs to be done, so.
Yeah, and I have, I still have monthly stuff that I have to make sure we get done too.
And Candy, Candy was going to come in and do some of the inventory in the office, I think, wasn't she?
Yeah, it still has to flow through us.
Yeah, right.
We get our, our done.
True.
She doesn't have.
Exactly.
She doesn't have much.
Much to go, yeah.
She wants to come down to the shop, start counting.
We had talked about it, she said, is that what I'm going to be doing?
The other thing that'll be helpful too, if hopefully it can happen, is by March, the auditors will have their review of twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one done.
Hopefully.
And that'll, you know, that'll give you, you know, when we started with twenty twenty, they gave us the ending balances for twenty nineteen, which then we moved into twenty twenty to help give us kind of a jump start. So that, that, that'll be helpful too.
So their office is backed up, so I reached out to the auditors in November, because I was a little concerned, I hadn't heard from them, because I was sending them everything and I thought that I missed something, so I reached out to them. And they have had turnover, so the lady that was working our case, she quit and moved down to a different state, so now the, the Brian who helped us the last time, he is taking over, but his wife was due at any time and he was taking six weeks off with her for parental stuff, so he told me he wouldn't read, he wouldn't be able to even get to us until January. And that's for the twenty twenty audit, so we've sent everything they requested. It's just, we're waiting on them for that part, so.
Earlier in the meeting, it meant something about AE two, AE two S was supposed to help, but.
Julie, Julie had mentioned that when I stepped out. We reached out to AE two S when I was probably like six to nine months in, and so I didn't really know. I was just learning, I had just started working with Mark, I was just kind of learning and getting my feet, or diving in, I guess, to all this and trying to get an understanding of it. We reached out to the lady from AE two S, she said, yeah, I'm going to work with, she was actually working with Rala at the time. I'm going to work with Rala, get them, and then I'm going to help you guys, and we never heard back. Tried emailing her, she never responded, and.
She was just going to do that out of fee or?
Yeah, oh yeah, we had to pay her, but the last time I talked to Erin up in Rala, she still has, does not have twenty seventeen fixed, maybe she does now, because that was last spring, but when I got to talk to her, because I didn't go to have a sick this year, but.
We don't have, we just have a.
Agreement, agreement that she would do it for some.
Right, yep, but, so that's when Mark kind of stepped up and said, well, we gotta get this fixed, and that's when he's, he took over and did some stuff, and then he helped me. And came into my office and overwhelmed me till I, he could see a deer in the headlights look in my eyes. But eventually I caught on, so, and.
Mark says she's very, I can leave now. Mark says she's very, I can leave now.
This is a good spot to leave her.
Oh, yeah, I mean, it's not like I've been doing this for two years.
Sarah, let us know when her eyes are glazed over, Mike will come back.
Yeah, so it's not like I've been deep diving in this for two years, uh, that would be a different story, then yeah, I should have it fixed, but I've truly, honestly, only been really, really understanding and learning how to do this probably about a year, maybe a year and four months. So it's just been a very big learning curve, but yeah, so after AE two S just never replied back, Mark and I just kind of got together and he showed me exactly what we needed to do and, and that's where we're at now.
And I'll make this as a blanket statement for all of our employees, that if things that were supposed to happen that aren't happening, or things that people said were supposed to happen, or we thought were gonna happen or not, please let us, the commissioners, know so that we can step in. Cause until you guys said that, I had no clue that I was understanding that AE two S was helping us, or understanding that something else is happening. And if, you know, things aren't getting worked out, um, you know, we gotta do communication, that goes for everybody.
And if you said something to us and we haven't followed up on it, we gotta say, keep sending an email or, or something, just so we get the point that this is important, you know, because we might not, they might not think it's important, whereas it is important to you and Jim, or whoever it might be.
Or any of our employees, I mean, and pass that down, that, you know, if you need something, you wanna be open.
We could always help, but it, but, you know, we can shoot it where we can to make, make your life easier, so.
You know, Levi, I think the city is very, very fortunate to have Mark here to help. Guys, actually, I really do, I don't think we should ever take it for granted. As a taxpayer, I'm just saying that, I think all the commissioners too are quite lucky to have him here. I'm not saying it because you're here, Mark, you know what, you'll get, Mark knows me well enough that I say what I think and I do appreciate it as a taxpayer.
I tell him all the time, don't worry, Mark.
Yes, you do. That's fine.
All right, so do we have anything else on the budget side slash financial? We'll get this updated and sent out to you. I'll try to get it out today as.
I'm on my computer, going every gold once, I don't do next time.
I'll call it something different if you have it, and you'll know what it is.
Thank you, Paul, for the explanations on these, I'm gonna break down, but like helps immensely.
This is what you're gonna basically, when you're being, this is what you're gonna start with?
I'm gonna take that, that number, yep. And then I will make sure that, my goal is if you looked at this funds overview, was any funds that are like the one hundred or anything that we are using majority was to either get it at zero or positive.
And Mark, just to clarify, you, you got, you guys feel that these numbers, the, the only thing that might be off is, it might be more funds in one account than the other one, but the, but the, but the number on the bottom would be pretty close?
I, I feel confident because it, the transactions that make those numbers up are, are pretty straightforward. I mean, I, I'm not promising you that there wasn't a four hundred thousand dollar receipt for a bond payment that was, or not a bond payment, but a, well, a bond, uh, receipt coming in that wasn't double recorded or something like that, but those, those, you know, when, when we sit down and reconcile transactions, we're usually within two hundred and fifty to a thousand dollars when we reconcile it. And that's why I felt that if they were entered in their right, that should be pretty close. And, um, and, and if I turned out that it's a million dollars off.
So we're gonna, we're gonna send you on a vacation, so you can draw a football during the cities or something, so.
Just from being in and out of the bank account, I can say that our, our balance in the bank account is between that three million and four million plus dollars usually.
Wanted to tag on that, if, when you're doing this the next couple of months, if you should happen to see some, like you said, a double entry or something, if you should see something that's really, that's big, you'd wanna be sure, let us know.
If it's ten thousand or five thousand or off, then let us know so we can figure it out, or at least have knowledge of it, um, so.
Don't have to worry about that as much as a two hundred thousand. Or even a hundred though.
So maybe our next meeting is on the third. Ashley, when would you have, would the third be the day that you would have this updated? That we would know the updated balance?
For, I can, I can pull, I, so the fund statement sheets, I won't get those until second meeting.
Cause the receipts all have to be entered and stuff.
The receipts have to be in the money market, um, that has, doesn't come till probably the second, that statement doesn't come till like the first or second week of the month, and so that has to get entered in too, because that goes under the receipt portion. Um, and that goes in those fund statement sheets, so the fund statement sheets for December, I can all have for the second.
No, this.
Oh, that I can print every day.
Right, but, so when you guys do payroll, which is.
That's done, she did that today.
So that payroll's in this?
That I don't know.
When did you, what time did you print this? One thirty-nine?
But did she put?
She sent all that in.
Did she? I can print it tomorrow or on the, on Monday, no, Tuesday.
No, Tuesday. And then payroll and all that will be in there for sure.
Yeah, if I print it on Tuesday, payroll and that should all be in there. And then hopefully I can figure out why.
Cause that would give us the most updated final number to go off of.
Yeah.
And then on Monday, just go into the bank account and see, print it off for all of us for Tuesday to make sure that we can see what, what this is, or on Tuesday, what this is compared to.
I can print off the bank, I can go to the bank and get a printout, but I can't.
I'm pretty sure payroll is in that, cause she sent, she sent all of that to the bank this morning. And then you have to update fund accounting during payroll, so.
Oh, it looks like it must be.
Yeah.
Cause that's November.
I'm not sure, Julie's, how they, what time they come in.
Cause.
But, but the payments from PSN are not in there yet for.
No, not those, no.
So those, but those would be, so the last payments of December for PSN should come over, cause we pull reports every morning. And so those reports that we pull on Tuesday, that will pull over what's left for over the weekend and Friday and all that.
And then she does do a deposit at the end of the month, so on Friday, we'll do a deposit.
Well, I'm just saying, whenever you do, whenever you pull this, pull the bank account so that we can put them side by side and then everybody can feel a little better that know that this number is close to what is in the bank account.
So I'll have to go on Tuesday, I'll go ask for a printout of where we're at.
Well, you know, but just be careful because, you know, your bank statement will have a bunch of unclear checks and that stuff like that, so.
But I mean, the total of the, have them pull this in total of that day, it'll be, it'll be exact, but it'll be close, let's think.
It'll still have.
If you have a hundred thousand dollar check that is declared, you'll be, you know, right there.
I don't think we have, I don't think we wrote any hundred thousand dollar checks in last month.
I just paid my life bill.
We're covered.
Receipts are better, all right.
Nice, Rick.
So we feel comfortable on that, we can move forward on the budget and all, if we get it updated and move, okay? All right, so the other item was the evaluations. And I know the policy said one thing and we've done different ways throughout. My plan with the, with the evaluations were that, which I haven't sat down with you.
Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year, Mark.
Thank you, Mark. I hadn't finished the evaluations, I mean, I have them done and we haven't signed off and I haven't sat down with Jim yet. But my plan was, is that I would sit down with the evaluations and then give them to you guys for the final approval. I don't believe that it should be just one person necessarily signing off on it completely, and that's where, you know, there's different ways of doing it, the other way is that each of, one of you could do your own and then we do the evaluation.
So Jim and I talked and there's nothing against you guys, you guys just don't work with us on a daily basis, so when we talked, our thought process was, and Jim can correct me if I'm totally off base, but if we have one commissioner and then one of our peers, since they're in the office with us, and they, they should know what, you know, they should know our tasks or have an idea of what we should be doing and they, cause they're there with us every day, they know when we're there, they know when we're in the office working, they know when we go to the bathroom, they know when we, you know what I mean, they basically are there with us all day long.
You gotta find something better to do with your time if you know what you're supposed to do.
By my desk.
Right, so that's what Jim and I had talked about, we think that would probably be better than having two commissioners.
I just, I don't think it's fair that, just to make sure in the future that it isn't done by one person.
Right.
And your evaluation goes off, I mean, I have an evaluation that was two years ago, that I was above average satisfactory. And leaving, I'm sorry, but the one you gave me, as far as your evaluation goes, I'm considered below satisfactory. You know, I realize there are things I need to improve on, um, at the beginning and that, in the policy it states that there should be a day-to-day communication of between your supervisor and the employee, and my office is always open, and I just feel that some of those things, I feel would have been better if you would have came to me and talked to me about them. And not that we can't still do that, but that, that was my, I thought that was very unpersonal, the way we did it. And, and you know, I was expecting you to come to the office, we sat and talked about things, you know, blah, blah, blah.
Which, my plan was that we were gonna sit down and do it, I just haven't.
And I know, and I was busy and I was under the weather also, I realize that, but I just wanna make sure going on in the future, but Ashley's got a good point, also in our policy, when you look under grievances, that's what they allow you as a fellow worker to come in and sit with you and help explain, or help to, to, so you guys know exactly what this person is doing and you know, I mean, it, it could be my fault too, but I know you guys don't know everything we do day-to-day, I, I realize that and I just, I don't, I'm hoping not to be evaluated on things that you think we should be doing that we're not doing. I feel that I've been evaluated from the residents of Hillsborough and whole commissions overall these years, and there will always be people that don't agree with what I do, but I feel that, that I have.
You looked at me.
I'm sorry?
I said you looked right at me.
Well, I'm sure Chuck did things, you know.
If you were probably public speaking, you know.
Look around.
I, I just feel that I've tried my best to do my job and I, I, I think over the years that my feeling was if the lights are on, the water runs, the toilets flush and the streets are clear and everybody, the majority of the population's happy. Not just me, but we are doing our job and what we're supposed to do, so, um, sometimes it's hard to teach an old dog a new trick, so I realize that.
We gotta look at redoing, cause it says in the handbook supervisors will be evaluated by the personnel commissioner and one other commissioner appointed by the president of the commission. Well, that's kind of a, you know, should, should he not be the personnel commissioner?
Well, it's the same person.
Chain of command.
Well, right, right, also, do we, should we, do we look at, I wanna look at Dave and Mike, what their thoughts are, because, you know.
Well, I think there should be two people doing it, you know, whether it be one of us or one of their peers.
Right, and, cause I think if you read further on, you guys correct me, I thought that there was something in there where if you have a grievance with what we had, then your next step is to go to the commission president.
Right.
If the commission president's doing it, you don't have more recourse, you don't really have any recourse.
The, the policies were, were set up for, I feel, employees underneath us.
Right.
There's nothing, and you made sure of it when we, when we were talking about family members working, that there was something in there about, about us, if something happens to us, but.
Really, Jim, you're not, you're not per se.
There's nothing in there that says, if I have an issue with my supervisor, the next point is the same person, and then from there, you know, I, I do feel it should eventually trickle down to the whole commission. And if, if, if it's okay, I would like to bring up another issue also, that, and I, and I know you all saw an email back in December. I received an email from Commissioner Reese and it, it pointed out some, some issues, electric issues, communication issue, which yes, I, I do realize I need to improve in that. And then came to a spending issue, but at the end of it, it, the statement was that this will serve as a written reprimand. And so I went back to the policy and I just looked through the process for, for doing that. And they set it up in stages, starting with the verbal and then a written and then suspension. But at the top it says, these actions may be taken in order listed, although this order is not mandatory, the decision may be made at the discretion of employees and the supervisor, so in other words, you have one person that can decide this again. And in the future, if, if an employee and a supervisor butt heads, which it happens, it just, to me, it's not fair that the weight is all on one person that deciding that, I think, I think also there that it should come back to the commission as a whole deciding that. I, I, I know there was things in there, I felt that the, the reprimand, I just, I guess I don't agree with it.
No, I, I, I think it should be a whole, before a reprimand is sent out like that, on email at that, I think that it should be a commission, should be discussed with the whole commission before a reprimand is sent out.
And I just, I feel that those steps should not just be suggested, but in the future be followed for, for the employees' sake of it.
And I almost agree, there should be two, whether it's the commissioner or an employee.
I just think the employee would make more sense, because they see our day-to-day actions. Because you guys, I mean, nothing against any of you, because you guys, you're part, I mean, this isn't more head or fargos here, you guys is part here, you don't have offices here, you're only part-time. A lot of you have other, you know, some of you have other jobs, and so you guys don't see how we are in the office, you don't see how we are with customers or citizens, and so to me, I would rather be evaluated with one commissioner and our peers versus two people that have no idea what goes on.
That are, or even the personnel commissioner and another and one other commissioner and a fellow parent. I mean, you don't have to listen to what they have to say, but.
Just take there.
Someone that's there on the day, day-to-day basis.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to add one thing and I'll leave, cause I don't wanna get into that argument. Number one, to you two people that are supervisors, who do you think your bosses are?
The commission.
Okay?
And, and to me, the.
Then shouldn't there be somebody in the commission that could speak to you one-on-one?
Yes, exactly, that's what it says in the policy, that's the point I was bringing up.
And as far as having a fellow employee come to a meeting, if two commissioners and per se they're interviewing you, should be enough. Two commissioners, there's two views of, of what they're thinking about, uh, that's where it should end. I will tell you though, my last job, when you start talking about how discipline should work and shouldn't work, and Ashley can look at the floor.
I looked at the floor.
But my boss looked right me in the eye and he said, this is what, this is gonna happen, this is gonna happen? And I said, well, what do you mean? He said, you've been given your first verbal warning now. Your second one will be an email or a slip put in your file, and the third one will be goodbye.
Right, but I don't think that happened.
What?
But that's not what happened.
I don't care what happened, I said this is a suggestion, should happen.
Right, no, I agree with you on that.
The verbal warning should be right now at the meeting, the second one should be a written one or an email one where there's proof that it happened. And the third one is goodbye.
But Chuck, do you think the whole commission should be involved in it?
In the, in the end, on the goodbye one, yes.
Not, not in the beginning, the beginning. The beginning part shouldn't, none of the other commissioners should know what's going on?
Two commissioners should know what's going on.
But they don't work with us, like on a day-to-day basis.
Chuck, that is the process, I just ask them to.
Right.
Well, you know, everything, you gotta give and take a little bit here, because everybody's got a different job, everybody's got a different idea, but with our modern equipment nowadays, two commissioners can email between one another and come to a senses that, hey, this is wrong, it's gotta be addressed right now. And the biggest thing, I've never worked at a place where we've had a blanket 6% increase for everybody. I ran two businesses in town here and one was very profitable. That guy, we had some that would get an eight or 10% increase, some would get a 1%. Needless to say, we kicked them out the door or they left because they weren't happy. And that's, that's how you generate good employees.
You also have.
It's gotta be the management that takes control, it isn't the employees that run the show. The employees are the workers, they gotta be responsible to somebody.
And they are.
Is there a difference between, when you were doing, is there a difference between cost of living raises versus performance? I'm just asking, I'm, I'm just curious, 'cause I don't know how that works.
Cost of living, no, I don't think so.
It seems like our federal government.
Back, back in those days, we lived on less, we made a lot less. It's just scaled right up the ladder. City employees were working for $8 an hour when I was on the commission. You know what they're working for now, don't you?
Yeah, but that's, but everything else is not.
I do.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I'm getting at. But there's still gotta be a boss of the show, I don't care. And some of you commissioners, you know, it's like we say, not everybody's running to be mayor, and I'm sure as heck don't wanna be mayor, but I, I realize there's gotta be the boss. And the day that comes where you think you're the boss, well, someday it'll change. So, thank you, I wanna leave the office, wishing you all a Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, Charlie. Before we go too far, I, I can tell you that, you know, some of the stuff we did talk about, Jim. Paul and I came down and talked to you about some of those things back July, August, whenever it was. And before that email was sent out, I did confer with another commissioner about what I was doing.
But did you give him a verbal reprimand first? Did you point blank, I think that's the point that Jim's trying to make, is there was no verbal.
And I'm sorry if I didn't say verbal.
I would say the broadside, I just.
Right. And to me, if there's gonna be a verbal, we should have some sort of form in my office that after the verbal is given, and then the party that the verbal was given to and the commissioner, Personnel Commissioner and the President, provided they're separate people, or at least two commissioners should sign off and say, yes, this was given on this date, this is the reason, this is a verbal warning and that goes in their file.
That's the process that I'm asking for.
Yeah.
And it probably would have opened, my eyes probably should have been opened anyway, but it more so would have been, okay, this is, this isn't, this is somebody asking, this is serious, I need to address this.
Right, 'cause right now he's got a written ver, no verbal, a written, so the next is termination?
Not necessarily, a written just mean, a written.
Where is he even in here?
A written doesn't mean that you have to be and it doesn't have to go back, that the next time, that's what it's gonna be. But it is, it is one spot moving forward and looking back, because it's one individual. But there again, you know, and JR can confirm that neither one of you can be fired arbitrarily at any time. There is a process for both of you, because you're in an appointed position. So even if we said today that you were gonna, we were going to end your position, well, there's still a process that we have to go through, so.
Not one person can do it.
Not one person could ever do it.
And I understand that, and we had a discussion too, and I said, you know, at my point, my career, a, a reprimand in my file is, is not gonna affect my, you know, I didn't want, I don't wanna go out that way. And I don't wanna be here defending myself, but if so be, so be it. You know, if you decide that I need, I'm not doing my job and I need to move on, so be it. If you don't wanna give me a 6% raise, so be it.
But we also have to remember that things weren't done the way that they should have been done, you know? This is a learning process for all of us, 'cause two years ago, if we would have had this in place and things would have went, things would have went a lot easier for the city as a whole. And so it's all learning for every one of us and yes, I can say I'm sorry that, you know, I didn't give you a verbal. I considered when Paul and I were talking with you about different things and some of these things came up, that that was, but it didn't officially go in, so how do you go from there? But you will, for me, I will never, ever write a verbal reprimand or a written reprimand to anybody without conferring with somebody else, because that is pretty harsh and it's one of those things that I would never, could never do. And especially when you guys are, it's gonna come before a commission, city commission, if something happens like that. And I don't see reprimands as, okay, this is a, we're gonna fire, because like you said, it's more for the employee side where there's not an appointed position where public works and auditor are. Because it's appointed, there is that process that we'd have to go through in order to do it. So, you know, a reprimand, I would see it on your sides as, would show as that this is in the file and we're going to move forward and do better and then see improvement on those things.
I think, I think that that should be taken out of his file though, and this is just my personal opinion. And it gets switched from a written reprimand to a verbal, so that it's following the handbook and then that way we're following the steps, because going straight, like Jim, he was, he was blindsided. But I was blindsided to get that letter or that, to be on that email. It took me by surprise, because I know what he does, I don't know exactly what he does on a day-to-day basis, but I have an idea and I, I know that he's working every day unless he's got appointments or something. So I was even shocked by that written reprimand. And so I think that, because it's a learning process and it's the first time it's ever happened and I understand where you're coming from Levi too, but I think in this case it should be taken out and put in as a verbal, since it's the first time and everybody's learning. That's just my own personal opinion.
I would be fine with doing that.
To me it was, it was more personal. To me, I felt as though I was doing the job the best I could and all of a sudden between that and evaluation I got, I just, it was like, well, evidently I'm not, so, but, and if that's the consensus of the whole commission, then like I said, so be it. Thank you.
I thought it was kinda harsh altogether, you know, but I guess.
Yes, Ashley, you can change it to a, however you wanna put it in, that it's a verbal, not a written.
Thank you.
And like we talked at the office, maybe we need to put together just a form, like a verbal form. I've seen that in different places I've worked where you've signed, you sign off that this is a verbal form. We can do that too and attach it to that, so it's not written, it is.
Why don't you fill out the form that's written?
You know what I mean?
The form says verbal.
The form says verbal.
You might find my predecessors isn't as easygoing as myself.
The, the form says verbal. Um, I, I.
And I didn't realize that we needed to, so I will work with somebody to get another commission to sit down and do an evaluation.
Thank you, that was gonna be my next question, is if we can have a new one.
Things have changed, I can't remember everything, so. Just, just remember that before, we never had evaluations, we never.
See, I was gonna bring, you said we're working on it, you know, six years ago, four years ago, we didn't have evaluations. We didn't, we, like I said, you were evaluated by your work you did.
But remember that I also, when we, we started this, I said, one of the points of evaluation is though that no single person could come in and have a vendetta or issue and try to get rid of somebody.
Please, yes, that's the main thing.
And it's hard when you, and this is me as a teacher and an evaluator that does a lot of things. If you could do away with the scale, I would, because a three or a two doesn't mean anything. It just means that you, whether it's proficient, non-proficient, whatever, it just means that there's areas of improvement. It doesn't mean overall, that overall score should mean anything. It is certain areas need work, some areas don't. And when I look at it, I don't look at a score at the bottom, I look at each individual area. But that's me personally and how I'm looking at it.
Well, it's like for me and Jim, it's hard, because like Jim, or like Jim said, and I, mine lost somewhere on my desk, but Jim and I both went from being like, and we do look at score, it's hard not to look at that score. I mean, it's there, it's on the form, it's hard not to look at.
It's just your base of evaluation.
Right, and so we have been getting these fours and now all of a sudden, like I, you have me at a three, which is still exceeded, like meeting the requirements, and then him below, meeting requirements. That is hard for us to swallow and that's why I got so upset and.
That's where we need two people.
Right, and I will apologize Levi for, I know I was, I was upset and I probably said things I probably shouldn't have, but, and I probably didn't articulate, what?
Thanks for the heads up.
I probably didn't articulate correctly when, that's what I meant by, I have a hard time taking an evaluation from somebody that doesn't work here, it's because like Sarah knows me, Julie knows me, it's not that I don't want a commissioner, 'cause they can see from the outside in. So I think that's where you get those two perspectives and that's why I would like to have a coworker and a commissioner or two commissioners.
But then you could argue, is that a comfortable position to put the coworker in either?
I think that our.
If she has, if she had an issue.
But you also have to remember, and you won't know, because I'm not gonna tell you or Jim or anybody else, that if I talk to somebody else about things and going through on out the year, what I'm hearing and talking to different employees, that also is what else I would have based an evaluation on. It's not just me personally looking at everything. I mean, I talk to, I try to talk to all the employees as much as I can or try to and I'm not great at getting to everybody, but that is my hope, you know, with time to, so that you can get a feel for it, but that's me and my personal opinion and, you know, and like I said, again, just speak, we, on the educational side of our world, we have learned that and we have been taught that if it's an A, B, C and D or a one, two, three or four or five, and five being the highest, you have to get to five. You have to, but that's, that's not what it is. Or, you know, you have any evaluations when we go to the hospital or Paul, if he had an evaluation of his work at a body shop or at a shop or JR, whoever, it's, everybody thinks that you have to have that five star, because that's what we've been so ingrained to do, but is it, is it a five star means that you're going above and beyond and doing things over and above what is being asked of? And that's, I have a hard time with evaluation and do I like this form? No, not necessarily, and I can tell you on the educational side, we don't do one, two, three or four or fives. It is things that we need to work on.
Maybe that's where we need to go to then.
And it was somewhat that way, but.
Something was like 20 pages long.
I get that, but that one was based on what improvement and goals, it wasn't based on numbers.
But if you came to me and you said, "These are the five items I see that you need improvement on and not give me 20, but give me five items that I can work on and try and prove," to me, that would mean so much more to me than, than elongated, that now the other one was.
That other one's wrong, but nobody asked me at the time, that wasn't when it was put in. It wasn't about filling out the whole thing, 'cause there's things in there that are not applicable or fine. You put in the areas that you need improvement, but if you don't have those things to jog you or to say, you know, these are the things that we should be evaluating on, do we really have anything to go off of? You're trying to remember back, but it's those points that, you know, you could say not applicable. That an evaluation is not about being, at least for me, is not about being a number on a chart. It's about, you know, improvement on things that you need to work on or areas and things that.
Do you take the same base with the same, same issues and remove the numbers? And just concentrate on those and don't worry about a number. If you've got a big, long paragraph in that section, you know there's some issues that you probably should be looking at.
Right.
Just a suggestion, I don't know.
So what about job descriptions, you know, 'cause if you have a job description, I don't know if you do or you do, but for somebody doing the eval, I would look at, okay, you know, she's, she's supposed to do this, this and this, and that kinda gets interjected in the interview, how are things going with this and this and this? 'Cause to me that's a kinda jerk, 'cause what are you, what is your job? You know, so if I have those, if I have those things, well, we're talking, we're talking the main, the main stat and we're not, 'cause, 'cause I always, I always look at about a job description, I always look at at the bottom, it says anything else I want you to do or I need to be, have you done, you know? So it's not, but this is the main things you need to do and as a person evaluating, that would be nice to have, okay, now I know what, what I'm supposed to be expecting from this person and it maybe helps me with some questions. Or maybe as I'm observing you throughout the year, I could see, well, you know, that she did good at this, she didn't do good at that, Jim did good at this, whatever it might be, but that helps us as, 'cause we're not in there every day. We don't know everything you do, but if you kinda give us, I said, this is the some, some of the things I do, now we kinda know and it helps with, that would help me personally with the eval, because I know that, you know, these are some of the things that Jim should be doing or Ash should be doing. And if it come to a meeting and they're not getting done, well, then, then throughout the year, well, you know, what? And to me, I'm more, I'm a little bit more different than a lot of people, I don't, I don't even care about, I'm gonna go, if I got a problem with Jim, I'm gonna hopefully go to Jim and say, "Jim, we really need to work on this."
Paul and I don't, every week, you know, so.
Talk about things. You know, so it's, to me, that's, because that's just the way I am and, you know, yes, if it ever got to the point where Jim was just totally not even doing what he was supposed to do, then of course, then you, then you have to have those steps. But to me, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm pretty easygoing, so I'm gonna make sure that, that these things are, I'm more patient and let things develop, because I'm, 'cause we know, like you said, you never even had a valise though, two years ago. How do you change the way you've been doing it for 20 years? You change it overnight, it just, it's not gonna happen, no matter what it is. Whether it be the, whether it be the city employees worrying, the proper attire, you know? You know, that's one of the battles you have.
No, Paul, you brought up the, your, what your job description is and, and we're going through this thing where if Ashley was to leave, you'd start right back at the same square one and start all over. The amount of things that have trickled down to me since Mark left, that have fallen into my, my plate to, to do. Leslie was good, she did a lot of stuff. When Matt came, Matt refused pretty much to do all paperwork, any documentation. I mean, I'm working on EPA documents and Health Department documents, probably six of them in a year that I was never, I had in 20 years, I had never done 25 years. And in the last four years, they have, now to me, and I, I feel good about being able to do them and I'm glad they're now, because when you do find someone to take my spot, that probably should be their, one of their requirements, because it pertains to water and electric. And those, that are the things that I do that we do. And I often wondered how they could do that and, and fill those out. And I mean, they would call and want numbers and things, but yeah, so maybe it is good, it's true. But the things that have trickled down to, onto my plate, because the next auditor doesn't wanna do it or doesn't know how to do it, or I'm not going to learn how to do it at all.
And it helps, it just helps, to me, it's a big thing, because you're, you're done in 10 years, you know, so. He didn't say, no, he didn't, he didn't change. I didn't get one response, but anyway, but that's, my point is, is we don't, he's gotta start writing down things, John's gotta start writing down things, you guys got a million things in your head. If you don't start writing some of them down, we're gonna be screwed.
I mean, and I started doing that, because I felt I needed to do that.
Absolutely, and what might, and it might be commonplace to you guys, it's not to the next auditor or to the next commissioner or whatever, to know what, who's supposed to do this? Well, Jim's supposed to do it, no, Ash is supposed to do it. Well, if it's written down now, we know who's supposed to do it. Not to say that they can't help each other if they need help on something, but we gotta make sure it's done.
We and Sarah have started, I love one notes, that is like my go-to, and Sarah and I have started. And Sarah and I have started doing SOPs of things that we do and things that we've learned. If Julie teaches us something, I'm like, hold on, I gotta go get my tablet cuz I need to do this in OneNote. So that I have, and I'm a visual person and I'm very hands-on, so I have to do it myself. So a lot of times, actually, I have Julie come into my office and show me. And I take screenshots of everything and it takes a while the first time to get through because I have to take my screenshots and I write my little notes. But I have it, bullet point list, I can show you some of them so that when, and I do that for myself, yes, but also when I leave, cuz eventually I'll either die, retire, quit, fired, whatever. I, I want to leave that, I will leave my password and stuff so people can get in there so that the next person to come in doesn't have to struggle the way I did. Doesn't have to sit there going, I don't know what I'm supposed to be doing here, Julie, can you help me? Nope, I'm busy with this. And that's not against her by any means, like she was, she was swamped. She, she couldn't teach me anything. I have learned pretty much everything by just diving in and calling Mark and calling Jim and bugging Julie and trying to figure it out on my own. And so we have actually started doing SOPs so that in the future, those SOPs stay with the auditor's office so it's easier for other people. I'm, I love SOPs.
So just from personal experience, I've had performance reviews for the last 27 years and I have them every single year still. The best thing is a job description and what percentage of time you use in that particular area. Because if you can break it down to your 100%, and at the end, you usually have goals. So what do you want to accomplish and by what point by following years? So an example would be budget, you know, you want your budget forecast to be done by August 1st of 2023. But I mean, this, the, I think it's valuable to have those, but they're not meant to say what you do wrong. It's meant to tell you what your job is during that year in case you do add on more incremental things. Then that gets added to your job description because when you do put it out for other people to get hired, you need to know exactly specifically what they do instead of fly by the seat of my pants kinda thing. Because that's really not fair, the person coming in, because then they really don't know what they're doing unless it's specific, this is your job description, do you meet this criteria or not? So, I mean, if they're not, I would highly recommend job descriptions be put together, but
We have some, but they're not necessarily up to date or true. And it's one of those things where, where's our party?
So we kind of, things that may be an auditor in Morehead or Fargo or even maybe Castleton, well, Castleton's kind of our size valley city. Things that their auditor does, I might do more than what they do just because of the small town.
We got more support.
I, I understand where you're coming from and, and it just, to me, that would be very hard to break it up in percentages because we all do so much of everything.
Do you spend more time with customers, you know? Like hers would be maybe 80% in accounts payable, you know?
Okay.
It's, you know, for me, I think I've got like a 50, 40, 20, 10 or something like that. So I spend the least amount of time doing this, but I spend the most amount of time doing that. And that's where you make the biggest impact into your job.
And now for you, it's a good time to do that because you experienced firsthand what somebody new coming in the job, the issues they're gonna have. So here, you know, Jim's, you know, he knows too, but he hasn't experienced.
So was the, just to clarify, so from, you reduced Jim's from 6 to 3 on his, based on his evaluation? Is that my understanding?
No, what I had proposed or what we looked at was putting standards of goals and say, these are the timelines or goals that we want you to meet. And if you met those goals, then we would even go retroactive back cuz that shows that you had improvement based on the goals, that things were done and timelines were met and
Well, shouldn't we be doing evaluations before we do the budget?
And that's what we were trying to get them done, but yes.
But then my question is, goes back to, okay, I guess I was more under the impression that that was just kind of a cost. We needed to give 6% to keep people working for us. You know, it wasn't, to me, it was not really tied to anything performance-wise. It was just that we needed to maintain the great employees we have. And if we keep them, that's, so that's nothing that has to be clarified to me is, okay, am I giving Jim a 6% because he's doing a great job? Or am I giving him just because the cost of living is that much that I wanna keep him here as an employee? I don't want him looking someplace else. You know, so do we do our, do we do our wages increase, what should we do on? What do we take into account? Do we take into account both? Do we do, at what point do we say, hey, Jim's done a great job, he should get 12%. But Ashy over here, she hasn't done quite a good job, so she gets 2%.
Right.
You know, so, you know, and I'm talking, it can be Jim, John, anybody down there. You might have an employee that, you know, a new employee, you know, I got Brian, you think, oh my God, this guy's just blowing my mind, what he can do. You know, maybe you gotta look at, you know, reimbursing him a little bit more because of what he's doing cuz, cuz you don't wanna lose him, you know, cuz he is, you know, that valuable.
Hillsborough's been historically across the board just to make, keep everybody happy.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, we, we, it just seems like that's the easy way to do it and that's what they've done in the past and
Because I, I like, I like rewarding people that, that do good work, that are good employees.
And it wasn't me saying that, yes, this is what we're gonna do. This is, like I said, this is what I would propose because it's ultimately the five of us that are gonna make a decision on anything. There's nothing that
And that would have to be because we've already approved 6%. So we would have to hold on that.
On the handbook side, is there anything that we should change in it from what you've been hearing today? You'd have to refresh your mind on the handbook.
Probably have to take a look over it. Depends on what you wanna change.
Well, because, because I look at, cuz one thing that we either, we should change or else we gotta get somebody else in personnel is cuz right now Levi has the personnel.
And he's the commissioner, president.
You know, so, you know, we wanna change that or we wanna do something with that. I don't know, but it's something that we need to think about, you know? And maybe it's a point where nobody else wants to do it, so Levi gets stuck with it, you know, so. But that's, but I just look at, if we're gonna, cuz what's the sense of having the handbook if we're not gonna, if we're not gonna follow it to some degree?
But it is a work in progress because we haven't, you know, there's a lot of things that we, you know, I'm willing to change and make changes and things, but without conversations and communications and figuring these things out.
And I just, I just wanted to point it out, and I know Levi, we were just using a number, but if you looked at your salary range, you're, you're looking at $40 per alignment electrician, which, yeah, that's realistic. And I would assume that his supervisor would be me and you're paying me $35 a month. I'm not asking for a raise, I'm just bringing up a point. And I think once I'm gone, I think you guys will actually see where that number is gonna have.
That is just the reality, man. I see that, well, look at, look at
But you're not gonna get somebody in here less than that.
Right, right.
But you also have to, I mean, I can tell you that that is blowing out the water a couple of years ago because my wife is a manager and she has nurses working above that work under her that are making more than she is, double what she's making.
Okay, I guess I, I just figured that, yeah.
So is that
How's that?
That would be hard for me to work.
That's weird.
That would be hard for me as a manager.
So my next question, can I apply for that?
You'd have to have a degree. So, yes?
Do you wanna go back?
You know, and some of that goes back to what, what everybody has and what sometimes experience. But you look at where we were four years ago and what we were paying employees. We've come a long way in four years and we still have a long ways to go and
And I've told, I don't know how people I've told that I've been so lucky over all these years and right now I have another excellent crew. You guys have an excellent Public Works crew.
Yeah.
And they're happy, they like what they do and they're, they like Hillsborough and that's what you need. And it's made my job so much easier.
And we, and we can't say that enough. We can't say that enough, how much we appreciate what they do, whether it's the office or the shop.
I can't imagine having one of those eggs in there that just spoils the
We have that.
Right now, our office, our office and Jim's office, like we get along great.
Things click very well.
Yeah. So I think we are
Well
A lot of good people.
I don't wanna keep you guys past 4:30 cuz that's Jen's been done for over an hour already. And Cole's sitting back there, I thought he was gonna fall asleep.
I didn't wanna be threatening. I'll make the motion.
Dave makes the motion in a second. Second by Nicole, all in favor, say aye. Meeting is adjourned.